His expertise in that regard, and just a little fun fact before I turn it over to the mayor, that when we hired Jim back in 2010, he was five foot ten. He had a little girl's fur at the firehouse cooking. Mayor?
Hi, Jim Marks.
Hi, Jim Marks.
Having been duly appointed to the ranking of this year.
Having been duly appointed to the ranking of this year.
Of the Fire Department of the City of Moline, Illinois.
Fire Department of the City of Moline.
U.S. Alamo Square.
U.S. Alamo Square.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this year.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of this year.
Of the Fire Department of the City of Moline, Illinois, according to the best of my.
Fire Department of the City of Moline, Illinois.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
You'll note four more board appointments, and this concludes my seating of the Human Rights Commission. So I'll be working to orient them and get them going in the next few weeks. I'm excited for that. We have a broad representation on that committee. So we'll start tonight with presentations. Project Now update. Mr. Fort, Reverend Fort, please.
Thank you. I hope this is protocol that we can remove. If not, please adjust me, and I'll be more than happy to put it back on. Let me start by saying thank you to the mayor and to all the members of the council for our past and present partnership with Project Now. We have a lot of history, and we have done some great work together. My responsibility tonight is, of course, to come and bring my appreciation on behalf of our Board of Directors, but also our team that is closest to the street and to the challenges that we face with poverty. But it is also to fulfill our mission and our values with one of 1,100 in a network across the nation. Our agency has three counties worth of commitment, about 3%, a little bit over, of the state of Illinois. We have Mercer County and Rock Island County. Every county in the United States is covered by one of our agencies. And across those agencies, we have a value system that says that the chief responsibility of the community action movement is to essentially address the concerns of the poor, thereby addressing the concerns of all. We also have about the fourth value that says that it's my responsibility as the executive director to make known the challenges and advocate for the poor as well, with publicly elected officials. So it gives me a right, responsibility, and reason for being in front of you. So with that said, thank you again for allowing space to have this discussion. I'll be honest with you, it's going to be very short and concise because we're on schedule, but I welcome an opportunity at the conclusion or any time your schedule may allow to talk with you firsthand about what we're doing on the street. Let me start by just kind of framing what we do. If I were to ask you, why is poverty so persistent? I'm sure we'll get so many varied answers here. Why is poverty so persistent when we've had great movement from faith traditions that started early? Why is poverty so persistent when we've had great commitments by settlement movement that started to come alongside and people made themselves proximate to impoverished communities and cared for the poor? Why is it so persistent when we've had such great legislation that have helped to move the New Deal and the Great Society? Why are we still so challenged with poverty when we've had such things as calling the social responsibility from corporate America? Why is it still so persistent and so much of a challenge when we've had a nonprofit industry to try to stand up and confront it face forward? It's not only persistent, in many ways, it's been permanent for far too many people. Far too many neighborhoods are still left laying in want and desire for something different. My sincere hope is to try to help frame this tonight in a very short, concise way is that I believe that poverty remains so persistent is because we really don't understand poverty. We don't understand it because it's very complicated. We generally run right to the idea that what is the federal poverty level? We judge everything by that number of essentially $12,760 for an individual. And then we look at that number that says it's $26,200 for a family of four. To be honest with you, if a person makes $27,000, are they not just as poor if they made $26,000? And if an individual made $13,000, is she or he not as poor as they were if they fell below the federal poverty level? What's frustrating about this is that the federal poverty level tells us something, but it doesn't tell us enough because pre-COVID, 40% of Americans could not meet their monthly obligations financially, pre-COVID. What's true is that the federal poverty level tells us something, but not enough. It doesn't tell us the depth of poverty. Is that individual closer to $6,000 a year or closer to $12,000? It doesn't tell us that. It just says that they're here in the state of federal poverty allocation of funds. And how much you make makes a difference. The truth is, is that it tells us something, but not enough about the duration because when a person has been in poverty for so long, it can change their outlook in life. You know, sometimes people come up to me and say, Reverend White, you know, poverty is a mindset. That's what it is. It's a mindset. And I know I kind of get what they're trying to say, but the truth is that poverty is not a mindset. When a child's stomach is not extended because they have eaten enough, but it's deflated and getting closer to their backbone because there's not enough to eat. That's a very real thing. It's not a mindset when a family is getting dressed in the back of an SUV because they don't have any place to live. It's a very real thing. I will say this, I would agree, or at least propose this, that poverty can produce a mindset. And that mindset generally is hopelessness, that I'm trapped. This idea that there's a great highway into poverty and it's barely a sidewalk to get out of it. You're struggling for the rest of your life. And the federal poverty level doesn't tell us the situatedness of individuals. Where do they stay? Where do they live? It doesn't tell us if they're taking in toxic fumes from plants that are close. It doesn't tell us because of where they reside, where their house taking water every year because they can't afford to move. It doesn't tell us their situatedness. So our fight has always been to understand poverty, not necessarily agree with all the decisions that people make while they're impoverished because people tend to throw out consequences when they're fighting to survive. The truth is that we work with the generationally poor. And generationally poor are what James Baldwin described as individuals that reside in the dim-witted cell of the American dream. So many people say, well, I can't see more for themselves. I wish they could just see these opportunities. But I tell you, if you live in a sub-level dwelling all your life and you have to hang your head low because the ceiling is just above your brow, your back is bent, and all you can do is watch the footsteps of the rest of society off gingerly past you into their dreams and opportunities. Or in fact, you could hear the celebration of the floors above you and how life could really look like and work. The truth is, is people can't see much through a porthole that's sub-level, but I tell you, if we could work together to get people to the mid-level or to the roof, if we could fight to get children and those that are impoverished and families through the balcony, they can see tomorrow a little bit better. The understanding that we have is this frustration that we have, crisis poor, that there is a segment of society, even the residents of Moline, that are doing fairly well until something happens. Most health care is attached to your employment, and once it's gone, there went your health care. I'll be honest, I don't want to treat this as confession, but if my family member needed another round of chemo and I had bills stacked over my head and I found a way to say, go ahead with the procedure or the chemo, I would do it. I would allow them to come stick a sticker on my front door and say, throw clothes. I would allow them to drag my car out of the driveway and say, repossess. If I thought that next round of chemo would keep my loved one here another year. Crisis poor. People that normally do fairly well, but a crisis has thrown everything out. That crisis could be an addiction of a family member that eats up all of the money. It could be what the truth is, is that many suffer with domestic violence and sexual violence in the home and have to be separated and there went everything. Poverty is interesting because it not only has a deleterious effect on so many people, but it's also racialized and it's also genderized. That when you shake the statistics, you'll see that women and children are more likely to be impoverished. And so our commitment must meet those. And then finally, this is pretty oxymoronic. We have in this country is something called working poor, that you can work 40, 50, 60 hours a week and still not have enough. I know individuals that are peace parting a life together financially, catching the bus almost an hour in one direction, trying to hold things together. They're working overtime, beside the time, in between the time, trying to find a little bit more time to make a little bit more money. Still not enough. So wherever we stand on raising the minimum wage, and that's an argument to have about policy, but I think it's indisputable to look at the facts that everything has moved up in America, but wages for the working class. And I hope that we could have that discussion and find a way forward. So poverty has its challenges. So where do we come in in all of this? Well, we have a number of programs, and I don't want to be the standing embodiment of a program or pamphlet that you have in front of you, but I would like to try to give some depth as I move toward understanding where we go from here. We have weatherization, and that allows us to work in the three counties to make sure homes are not weather whipped. There are homes that have cracks all in the doors, and literally I've walked in homes and looked through the roof and seen the sky. You can look through sides of the home itself, put your hand to it, and wind whips right through it. Critters and everything else run underneath. What we come and do is weatherize that complete home. Whether they own the home or not, we can do it. The second part of that is that we do single roof repair. We can fix the entire roof. We can renovate the inside for a person that has now become other-abled, and they need assistance because they have a walker or they have wheelchair and need accessibility in and out of the bathroom or the kitchen. We can come in and renovate all of that. We can build a back deck so they can get up with their wheelchair and makes it easier for them to manage the affairs of their home. We also have 102 properties, 10 of them are commercial, and I'll talk a little bit about the commercial toward the end and what we have done in partnership. But we also have a little over 90-some properties, 92 properties, that are affordable rent. And when I say affordable, we're talking somewhere between $375 and $525 at the very highest, and that is for a single-family home with three to four bedrooms. We've been able to do this. There's not a high profit margin, but we are securing people. One of the studies suggests already in this area from Quad City Housing Council, Silos to the Solutions Study, said this area is short, 6,500 affordable housing units. There's a recent study that says that nowhere in America can a person that makes the minimum wage afford a two-bedroom in this country. These are the realities, and we're losing more and more opportunity to keep people secure. Housing is what we call the anchor of all of, all of other opportunity. Nothing moves until a person gets secured. They can't think straight. They can't think about education or employment until that housing is secure. And so we start with housing. Another prospect that we have in this weatherization and commitment to property is that we're able to do homeless prevention. We have a vehicle that goes out for Christian care. We don't expect homeless folk to come to us. We go to them. If you ever see a person that is designated as homeless or if you believe they need our assistance, we will come to them. We will come to them and ask them, are they ready for housing? And we can move them immediately. And we have transitional housing. We have permanent housing. And then we have supportive housing as well. We could take them to the full continuum. They could start out as homeless and they could stay with us long enough, or they move to permanent and then even homeownership. That's what I mean by securing opportunity for the future. The truth is, is that we have Head Start programs in the Quad City community here locally in Moline is where we've done most work with Head Start. We're there at what we call the Quad City Center, Head Start Center there. We've had a wonderful time. Our classrooms are always packed. Our teachers are first class. Head Start essentially gives children a head start. My mother taught Head Start for 30 years. Most of the women in my family were educators, and many of them taught Head Start. I'm a Head Start graduate. I'm a alum. Traveled all over the world twice, but I started out in Head Start. I'm proud to say that, and the rest of my siblings are as well. And so I'm connected to this in a very unique way. So Head Start is kind of this vehicle to really move children up the escalator to opportunity. We're proud to do so. We've just secured the Asperanza Center. We'll be expanding. So that gives us almost a little bit over a third of all of our Head Start programming right here in the city of Moline, and I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the support you give and the residents give, and I'm glad to be able to say in three counties, one-third of it is located right here. We also have our commitments with senior services and transportation. We have the REM service, Rock Island County and Mercer County. We provide transportation to dialysis, to food banks, to grocery stores, to their appointments. So whatever they need, we take care of. And of course, we try to get them to work as well, particularly in the rural areas. But right here, we're able to do some great work because of transportation. We serve about almost 4,000 seniors and seasoned adults. I like to call them seasoned adults. And have this opportunity to be with them, be present. We also have community services. You know about LIHEEP. You have a document in front of you. This past year, we did almost $720,000 in the city of Moline in LIHEEP alone, Low Income Heat and Energy Assistance Program. But then you put on top of that, we've also moved an additional almost $200,000. That takes us for the city of Moline. We've made almost just under $990,000 worth of investment, almost a million dollars of investment into the lives and community members financially in the city of Moline. I'm proud of that. On top of that, we have so many programs that you may have heard about that is burgeoning and new, which is the eviction diversion program that we've been working hard with. And so it's a unique partnership. We have Salvation Army. We have the 14th Judicial Court Circuit with Judge Pintoit. We have the Legal Aid or Perry State Legal Services with us as well. We have the Rock Island County Bar Association with us. And we have John Deere volunteer attorneys that provide the mediation. It hasn't launched out of the gate yet. We've been meeting with a sincere commitment because the governor's moratorium is still in place. It ends October 30. We'll test the rails and see what we have built. We've been asking, when can we serve? We have a total of about $2.5 million. We've already moved, pardon me, since February of the pandemic last year to this date, a million dollars' worth of investment. I have 1.5 million of it left, a little over 500,000 I can't touch until the rail comes up with the moratorium, but I have a million dollars that I can move right now. So we're trying to get people into the pipeline because we're expecting a tsunami of need. There's no way to tell how many will need the services. All I know is that Rock Island County has 15,000 renters, and many of them are behind. So our greatest surge right now is LIHEEP, but we're going to see that surge as we get closer to the moratorium end. So we're very thoughtful in that process. We're the only, we're the second county in the state besides Cook County, and they inched out above us by a handful of days that has this program. And so we're here. We want to serve. We want to help. Please let us know if there's more. We're trying to schedule meetings with landlords to help their tenants. We put out as much media, press, print. We've stood in front of microphones, the press conferences. We'll do whatever it takes to get this word out and to get people in the pipeline. I'll finally say these, these final words as we think about where we go from here. The Fully Free Campaign is a state of Illinois initiative we're bringing here. It's a partnership for those that are trying to find remedy to those that have permanent punishments in the state of Illinois. They're former felony convicted individuals. There are 3.3 million in the state of Illinois. There's over 1,000 laws on the book that doesn't have much to do with public safety, but prevents them from moving out of poverty. It creates a caste system. I need support so that we can move those individuals that will be designated to be on tax burdens, to be a part of the tax base, but we got to relieve them of those permanent punishments that stop them from working in places that have nothing to do with their conviction or public safety. That's coming up in the near future. We'll send communication out to the team that is here that facilitates the concerns of the city, but we'll be more than happy to send it to also the legislators and the council and the mayor. The Project Now partnership with the Hispanic Chamber is burgeoning and growing. With September 30th, we'll be at our location right there where we have 402 and 402 and a half on 7th, where our outreach location is located right next to the Hispanic Chamber. And this is good for me to talk about during Hispanic Heritage Month, that we've been in this partnership for quite some time. This celebration will take place from 3:30 to 5:00. We'll be keynoting and highlighting Fernando Landeros. He started with us back in 1989 with a $500 loan. And now he's one of our biggest contractors. He's not only able to employ himself, but family members and friends. This is what I mean by moving people up and out of poverty that have a chance to do something different. Martin Pizzano started with us in 2010, and Project Now was able to hire him with bidding process, and he's now been our main electrician. We're very proud of that as well. And we were able to support Virginia Castro with a small business loan, and now she has a successful Mexican restaurant in Moline, El Mariachi. We're very proud of that fact and that long history. And so since 1988, we've given out, or invested is a better way to say it, $1.5 million in small business loans. This has been our commitment. So I wanted to share those with you. Why do we do this work? Because we never want to forget the poor. Some time ago, I was at a retail store. A woman came out. Her heart was papitating. Actually, her eyes dilated, her pupils did. She was totally disheveled and displaced. One of the clerks helped her to the floor, and they sat her down right on the outside of the retail store. They pulled out their cell phone and said, can we help you, ma'am? Who can we call? We can't let you drive in this condition. And she just stopped when the young lady said, who can we call? I have a cell phone. She simply looked with a blank stare, and she uttered these words. There's no one to call. I never want poor people to feel they have no one to call. That's why we're here. If we can help, we're stepping in and stepping in with everything we have, with the backing of the agency, our board, and our values. And we want to move people up and out of this mess called poverty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to continued partnership. Great. Does anyone want to entertain any questions of Reverend Ford at this time? Not right now, but we definitely will be in touch. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is Mercado on Fifth Funding Request. Hello. Forward edit last night.
It should be.
Forward edit.
It's not part of the, I mean, they have it in front of them.
They all have a presentation. Let's verify then.
It's part of the agenda. It's attached.
Part of the agenda.
It's attached to the agenda. Well, okay. The one we got yesterday?
Yeah, it's in our packet.
I attached it.
Okay. Janine says she attached.
No. It's a different one.
If you keep going, I attached it as well.
There it is. I mean, James Patrick.
Yeah. That, right?
Both of the things that she sent were attached to the agenda.
Can we, can you, can someone please forward it to you? Is that possible or no?
You could go out to the.
But I think we can continue if they have it in front of them. Yep, go ahead.
Mention of our organization today. Some of you already know me, but for those of you that don't, my name is Ana Maria Rocha, and I'm the Executive Director of Mercado on Fifth. I have a little bit of my staff with me today. I have Greg Aguilar, who's a Community Navigator Program Manager, and Monte Lopez, who's our Administrative Coordinator. So as you know, Mercado on Fifth is in its fifth season of its outdoor open-air market in Moline's downtown. I hope that the letter and infographic provided prior to this presentation was helpful in supplying some background information about our organization. Mercado has seen great growth over the year with record growth in 2021. With continued growth comes great excitement, but also presents the need for additional financial resources. We are here today to begin the conversation about how we can obtain financial support from the city of Moline of less than 10% of our anticipated operating budget for 2022. This request is similar to the support provided to the Quad City Chamber of Commerce for business attraction and retention from the city of Moline. When the community thinks of Mercado on Fifth, the first thing that comes to mind is its outdoor open-air market. However, our work since 2017 has included promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, establishing a sense of place, increasing access to community resources, and the creation and sustainment of an equitable and renewable ecosystem. Mercado on Fifth has been recognized for its many efforts and successes locally, statewide, and nationally. However, its success came from the actions that followed, the initial realization that assistance was necessary and crucial to support and help sustain the minority small business owners who wanted to take advantage of the vendor platform that Mercado was working to create. Over the years, Mercado has grown into what the project of public spaces identifies as a great place. It fosters social interaction by drawing a diverse crowd. It nurtures and defines a sense of community and cultural pride, creates a connection between the Flores Santa neighborhood and Moline's downtown, promotes a sense of comfort and belonging by advancing social inclusion, and it also builds and supports an equitable local economy by supporting small-scale business owners. The foundation of Mercado on Fifth begins with its vendors. The delicious food and one-of-a-kind products are the heart of Mercado. We see more confidence in aspiring entrepreneurs to start a business now than we did in 2016. And that reason is because Mercado has developed a low-risk platform they can use to test their ideas and grow their businesses. More importantly, Mercado has worked hard to establish relationships and assist with the implementation of resources and services that support vendors with various parts of the process in their own language, developing an equitable ecosystem that did not previously exist. This year more than ever, we recognize the value and importance of the support Mercado on Fifth provides, not only to its vendors, but to the community as a whole. Our small businesses depend on us for guidance, mentorship, and continued support after they have started their businesses. Recently, we also learned that the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce also depends on organizations like ours to provide this type of support for startup businesses. The article from 2019 that's a part of my presentation tells us that this need is not new. While Latino business owners have been recognized for filling a need in the community, the access to resources and information is still very limited. Within the article of 2019, Teresa Camarillo, the then Community Development Specialist. Within the article of 2019, Teresa Camarillo, the then Community Development Specialist for the City of Moline, is quoted as saying, Hispanics need all the help we can get to be successful. We don't know where to go for information. Where to start is a problem. That problem still exists 20 years later. Another problem that exists is limited access to capital. Even when we see success among Latino-owned business owners, they are met with roadblocks in their attempts to grow and access capital. Currently, Mercado is providing two cohorts free of charge that consist of eight different workshops that include basic marketing skills, financial literacy, and educational information on how to access traditional loans and grants. This educational initiative was made possible through a grant and partnership with U.S. Bank. Within one week, we received 40 registrations for these workshops, which only tells us that the community not only trusts us to host these workshops, but they also need certain resources like this. We also received a grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity together with 18 partners in a hub-and-spoke model that has enabled us to increase our staff and provide outreach services within the Illinois Quad City area. Over the last four weeks of loan, we have provided outreach services to 148 businesses and assisted 26 businesses with their applications to the Back-to-Business Grant Program from the State of Illinois. Thirteen of those businesses are located within the City of Moline. As we look to the future, we realize the importance of continued programs and initiatives that consist of the removal of barriers for business startups and entrepreneurial activity as was identified within the 2014 comprehensive plan updates. Our goal is to continue to implement programs and seek funding opportunities that will allow us to continue providing support services for small businesses that include our micro-grant program, educational workshops, mentorship, information to assist with connecting businesses to opportunities to access capital, and serving as a liaison for small business owners with our community partners. We want to ensure we support and help sustain our vendors as well as our minority small business owners, and plan to utilize our community center that will open up next year to assist with those initiatives. Mercado on Fifth is more than just a market. We have built equity in the community. We have shown that we have gained the community's trust and that Mercado holds a special place within the community. Today, our request is for an annual support of $40,000 to help aid us in our mission and our efforts. While we have not identified a specific funding source for our request, we do know that various funding sources could potentially be considered, such as the General Fund, ARPA funds, or CDBG funds. Within the 2021 Annual Action Plan of CDBG, there is a statement that again supports this need, and it states, "The primary objective of the city's federal and state programs is to develop viable urban communities by expanding economic opportunities for persons of very low and low incomes. The missions of meeting and addressing these communities' social and economic development needs of low-income persons and their communities are important to the city. Unfortunately, there are barriers and challenges that hinder the development and implementation of important programs needed to serve those most in need." We are here to help aid with those efforts, and we hope that you guys will help us accomplish that.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions from Ms. Rocha? Not at this time. We appreciate your coming tonight and sharing your information. Okay, thank you. Do we have public comment this evening? Yes, please come to the podium, state your name.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Marcy Medenhall. I was here maybe six weeks ago talking about early care and education around the ARPA funds in support of Mayor's infrastructure plan for those dollars. Since then, some things have changed. Illinois has received about $1.3 billion, in which that billion dollars has been really invested in early care and education families to have more families who are living in poverty gain access to high-quality early care and education. They've given a $1,000 stipend for staff as well. In addition to that, they've also provided additional dollars for our staff to go back to go to school. These are all incredibly helpful pieces. In addition to additional research has been done, children who are born in the pandemic now are showing that there is about a 20% drop in IQ based on their exposure during the pandemic. We know that having kids, early care and education, high-quality center access for infant toddlers to's and all the way up to five years old is going to be crucial in preparing our new workforce. When having children at this age presenting with such a lower IQ, it becomes a challenge. I would really appreciate, I know these ARPA funds are very competitive, we can hear that throughout the community, but I really am interested in knowing more about how to reinvest into our buildings so that we can expand childcare slots for infants and toddlers so more staff can, for more children can have access, in addition to be looking at ventilation systems within Moline, early care and education centers and homes, also lights and outside business structures as well. Because we know through the pandemic has been extremely challenging for all, and I would appreciate the support for Mayor's ARPA funds for the early care and education. Does the mayor also have any questions for me?
Not at this time. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, are there questions on the agenda? Hearing them, we move to agenda items. First motion is an agreement, or not motion, first item is an agreement with Arrowhead Academy and Youth Build Quad Cities to construct and install parklets.
Yes. Madam Mayor, before the council is a request to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline, the Arrowhead Academy, and Youth Build Quad Cities to construct and install parklets here in the downtown in front of various businesses that have restaurants. We already have several parklets in place. This program would allow the city to participate with these two agencies to accomplish several things. One, the goal is to build three up to a maximum of 27 parklets as necessary in sections that would be stored at the Arrowhead Academy. The Arrowhead Academy would allow the parklets to be constructed in their classrooms as well as provide instructions to the youth. The Youth Build Quad Cities is going to pay the students a stipend as part of a mentorship program to construct and install the parklets. And funding for this would come out of either the Special Service Area Number Six for supplies or through ARPA funds. Keep in mind that the parklets are also part of the strategic plan. It's one of the goals. So we're recommending approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Alderman Wentz, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Mr. Wentz and then Mr. Waldron.
I just want to commend the staff for putting this together. I know I've talked with Jeff on many occasions, brainstorming different ideas on how to get these things built and implemented as soon as possible. And I think this is a great partnership that is a win-win in a lot of different ways. So thank you guys very much.
Mr. Waldron.
I want to echo Alderman Wentz's comments about it's an excellent partnership. Couldn't agree more. That said, there's always a but for me, but I'm a little bit interested in the long-term commitment or buy-in from the restaurants themselves. We are going to pay for the materials, so to speak. This wonderful organization's going to build the night. That part starts off to me just fine. And but, long-term, there is no commitment from any of the restaurants to store them, maintain them. I'm a little bit concerned about what their commitment is to this program. I'd like to see some sort of involvement for the restaurants themselves. The other item I'd like to keep in mind, and I think that we were sent a list of potentially about 25 restaurants that could utilize the parklets. Remember downtown parking, downtown parking can be sensitive, and not all downtown parking revolves around restaurants. Seem to think about it being that way, but there are a lot of businesses down there that are lockups, and they depend a little bit on this parking. And the more parklets we put in, actually will remove some of that parking. So I just want you to keep that in mind. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Second.
Yeah, to your point, and it's well-taken about the buy-in from the restaurants, I've had this conversation with Jeff, and I know that they are working on, which I think we're waiting for, is the update to the sidewalk cafe standards, because technically, the ones that we have right now don't allow parklets, ironically, and so that thing absolutely needs to be updated. But within it, there has been discussion on, because while we create these things, you know, they don't blast rubber, there needs to be some kind of regeneration, repairs, and all those sorts of things. And so I know that there has been some talk about, as the world gets back to normal, them, you know, renting them from us or a payment on a yearly so that we wind up creating a fund that can then rehab and rehabilitate these things and pick them up and move them out for the winter and get them back, so.
Mr. Schmidt.
This has been something that actually at the Moline Center Commission, we've been talking about a lot, and how to move that forward, and one of those big things, addressing the fact that our current guidelines need to be amended. Those are currently suspended, however, so they can be fixed before they become a problem. But I think from those business representatives who are on the commission and from Jeff's telling of how that has been received is, the restaurants like this idea. I think the long-term investment from a store perspective may be difficult to pull in. But I think for us, it's an opportunity to sort of define a little more of a pedestrian-friendly area and to make it so that people can come downtown. There's more outside seating, and it's really going to, not just for COVID, but even as we go forward, give us an opportunity to transform how that street feels a little bit. And I do agree with parking, we have to be careful we don't take away too much, though I think there is a lot of parking. But you could definitely focus too heavy in an area, but I think we want to move in this direction. I know I certainly want to see us move in that direction because it's just, creates a good environment, I think, for people to be at.
Mr. Waldron.
That's wonderful to hear, and I once again agree with Alderman Wentz. I would strongly consider, though, funding this out of the special service areas. I mean, it serves them. I believe that's where the funding should come, not from ARP or not from the General Fund. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, City Hall Lamp Post Declaration as Surplus Property and Donation to the Historic Preservation Commission for Reconstruction.
This particular item, what we're doing is we're looking to dispose of the original lamp posts now that they have been used as casts to actually create replicas of the original lamps. And there is no use for these, so we're looking for the disposal of these and the approval looks the same. And the cost for all of it was covered by the Historic Preservation Commission, and we hope to see those lamps up. We don't have a date yet, but we're hoping to see the new lamps up this year, hopefully.
Second.
All right, there was a motion to approve by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Wentz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. I do not have another tonight, correct?
I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just take this opportunity, I believe that he is downstairs with KJ, and is she online? Okay, great. I'd like to take this opportunity to, can we put that up on the screen here with the agenda so they can be seen? There you go. You just blow that up a little.
Try.
There you go. I love technology sometimes. Without further ado, I want to introduce the council to the new city planner, Sean Foley. He comes to us with a long career in city planning as well as zoning administration, and he most recently was working for the, living in Woodstock and working for McHenry County as a planner. Prior to that, he spent many years in the state of Nevada and the city of Nevada. And I know from actually holding the interviews with him and reading his credentials that they had a one-stop shop functioning there quite well out in Nevada where he was working. And that's one of the goals that we're talking about, so he could bring some valuable assistance to the discussion as we go forward. So I'd like to introduce you to our new city planner, Sean Foley. Please take the time to stop by and meet him and introduce yourselves. And he started yesterday, and he's drinking from the fire hose, which I continue to do. So welcome on board.
Welcome, Mr. Foley.
Thank you. Greetings commissioners, or councilmembers, excuse me. Bob has covered my background, so I'm not going to bore you with that at all. And yes, I've done the one-stop-shop thing in all three places that I've worked, McHenry County, Carson City, and Las Vegas. And my master's of urban planning and policy comes from the University of Illinois at Chicago. It's great to join Team Moline. I look forward to serving the citizens of Moline, you councilmembers, working with our city staff, and the city's partners. And again, I'm glad to be here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only other business I had. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to informational's 19th Street Bike Path, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Shane Larson is with us tonight from Hutchinson Engineering. They're the firm working with us to design the 19th Street Bike Path. We've had some community meetings, meetings with several partners on this project, and Shane's here to share with you an update on progress on that design.
All right, thanks, Joe. Yeah, I would like to, like Joe said, my name is Shane Larson. I'm a project manager for Hutchinson Engineering and in charge of the 19th Street and Mississippi River Bike Trail projects. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. Also, thank the city for trusting us with this very important project. And lastly, thank Joe and Laura and their engineering team for providing very solid project management and timely responses. The schedule on this project is pretty tight, and I think the Hutchinson and City-Moline teams together have worked really well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and show a couple things up on the screen if I can share, is I'm going to show some exhibits that we showed at the public meeting, and then a video for everyone to see. And I think as I show those, I want to talk you through where we're going with the project, and then hopefully that'll answer a lot of questions you may have. So I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen. Is that, you guys seeing, I'll pull this up real quick. Someone mentioned technology. It's always good when it works. Are you guys seeing my screen now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, I'm going to start, I'm going to walk through, as you're probably aware, the 19th Street part of this project starts up at the Avenue of the Cities, which is on the left-hand side of the screen. And in that section, we are going to construct a 10-foot-wide sidewalk right at the back of curb, and that will extend from Avenue of the Cities down to 18th Avenue. And then at that point, there is a crosswalk across 19th Street that will then connect to the same sidewalk at the back of curb that has already been constructed as part of the I-74 project. And then that extends, the I-74 project built that from 18th Avenue all the way down to 7th Avenue. So because that's not part of our project, you're going to, I'm going to jump forward here quite a bit. So I'm going to jump down to 7th Avenue, 19th Street intersection. Let me zoom in here a little bit. Thanks for bearing with me. So as part of our project, I'm going to kind of talk you through what you're seeing here. Gray is sidewalk, green is going to be green space, grass, landscape plantings, trees. The light blue is the bike trail or cycle track, as we're calling that, because it is separate from the sidewalk. And then everything in dark gray would be 19th Street reconfigured. And I say reconfigured because as you can tell, 7th Street on the left, this is the 6th Street, yeah, 6th Avenue intersection here in the middle of the screen, and that block there, we're reducing from five lanes down to four lanes to make room for the new cycle track. As we head north towards the river, you can see we transitioned then in that next block, which is now currently four lanes, and it transitioned to three lanes with one lane in each direction, and then a standard bidirectional turn lane. So it stays pretty consistent at that point from 6th Avenue. So it stays pretty consistent at that point from Sixth Avenue. And I'll kind of move slowly down through here. One thing I will point out is that this is the Fourth Avenue intersection, which you all know there's railroad tracks here. And we are currently coordinating with the passenger rail study that is ongoing by IDOT to work through this intersection. I think at this point, it appears the bike trail project is ahead of schedule of the passenger rail project, but we are in heavy coordination with Illinois Commerce Commission, Burlington Northern, and then the consultant that is working on this project for IDOT. As I keep moving north towards River Drive, you can see here, the bike trail, cycle track in light blue will once again merge with the sidewalk to create one crossing to get across to the existing trail that already exists north of River Drive. I keep going here and then I kind of get to the end of my screen here. So I got one more exhibit to show you. Uh oh. It's bad. Okay, so here you can see, and I rotated the screen a little bit so you can see. So now I got, I got the Mississippi River on our right-hand side, existing I-74 on the bottom. So as we get away from River Drive, we're back to a shared use path. So pedestrians and bicyclists together. So we'll extend down along the existing I-74 till we get to the river. And then we'll head straight west along the river. We'll get around the north side of the water building. And then we'll continue to head, to head west until we get connected to the existing trail there at the Coney Center. And I know there's been some questions, you know, early on, could we get on the north side of the water building? Yes, we feel, we feel very good about that. Something I'm going to talk about later, as you can see, this trail here to get from River Drive to down to the river, we will have to get out on, to stay away from the city's facility here with their Clearwell. We will have to get out onto the IDOT right away, which is going to require that, these bridges to be torn down before we can construct that part of the trail. So those are the exhibits we showed at the public meeting, and they were received very well. I'm going to run a video now. I may stop this at a couple points, but this is a video we put together. I'm hoping that gives you a little better visual of what we expect. And this, the video is going to start at Seventh Avenue here on the bottom and then head north down Nineteenth Street towards the river. So I'm going to go ahead and let that video run a little bit and stop it here in a second as we, as we start to see. And you can see here how we got Nineteenth Street down to four lanes, green space, as I discussed, psych, two-way cycle track. So bicycles in both directions on this side and then sidewalk here on the right. I'm going to go ahead and let that run here for a while so you can see it. As you can see, that green space varies in width depending on where we're at. It gets a little more consistent as we get here towards Fifth Avenue. And I'm going to go ahead and let that run. You can see on this, we actually have the railroad, the single track in there. Of course, we know at some point that will be a double, a double track, or we hope so anyway. You can see here, River Drive. So this section of trail is already there. So then we pick up here with our section. What you're seeing there is our trail down the middle. And those, the green is what you're seeing is our grading limits as we have to add some fill in those areas to get the trail elevation correct. Here's the city's water building here. So you can see how we get around the north side of that and then eventually tie back in there at the Coney Center. I'm going to go ahead now, I got some, I'm going to give you a little project update. Is there any questions at this point about those exhibits or the video or where we have the layout at this point?
Mr. Went.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the work you guys have done on this. I did have a few questions. The first section you had talked about was 10-foot. We're going to, that's going to be back of curb. There's going to be no separation between, I know north of that area because of some other issues we had on Nineteenth that's already built, it's back of curb and there wasn't anything we could do about it because of late engineering. But my concern is, you put it back of curb, you know, there's no place for snow deposit in the winter for clearing and also safety if there's no separation. Is there just not enough room along there?
Yeah, Councilman Went, I know you and I talked a little bit about this at the public meeting. There's a little more room at Avenue of the Cities as you get closer to Eighteenth. I think we probably have right-of-way room. It really kind of depends how much we want to fill in that ditch. But I mean, that is something we can continue to look at. I mean, at this point, we are not locked into that. So I mean, if that's something the city would like us to look at further, we could definitely do that. And it doesn't really change a whole lot of what we've done at this point.
I think that'd be great. I think just safety-wise and public works-wise, I think that that would be, you know, even if you have to taper it down near the end or something like that, but as much as we can get, that would be, that would be terrific.
Okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a problem.
Another thing you had mentioned was you're working closely and hearing somebody work with the passenger rail is very uplifting because we haven't really heard anybody actually really working with them. And so I really appreciate that. Has there been any discussion regarding that being designed in a way for a quiet zone?
Well, Councilman Went, I'm not exactly sure on that. I know the city has had discussions. I know that IDOT had mentioned that there had been discussions. So I'm not exactly, I can't exactly answer that because I haven't been directly involved, you know, with the passenger rail project and all the details going on there. Ours has been more, you know, about our project and what we're going to do. But I know, I've heard that mentioned more than just right here. So I hope so.
Well, if you can be our spy in there and have me in the conversation, just, you know, ask the question on the sly and see if it's, it's part of it that would help us immensely to know one way or another. Because I think we're getting the same ambiguous answers as well. So that would be.
So to bring, yeah, to bring everybody up to speed on what is going on there. I mean, we, with Joe and Laura's guidance there, we had a good meeting with the IDOT staff. And we were able to convince them, which we weren't necessarily confident we were going to be able to do that. But because the bike trail project is ahead of the passenger rail, we were concerned that IDOT was going to make the city absorb the cost of upgrading the rail crossing versus the passenger rail project, which obviously has much deeper pockets. And it really wasn't, I mean, IDOT seemed to be very understanding of, you know, the bike trail project may start, you know, may stop on the south side of Fourth Avenue and then pick up on the north side of the railroad right-of-way and then let the passenger rail project rebuild that crossing. Because as you know, it's not just about adding a bike trail on the sidewalk across there. I mean, you're going to have to move traffic signals. You're going to have to move railroad signals. I mean, there's going to be quite a bit of work. And IDOT seemed to be very understanding of that.
Wonderful. That's, that's great news. Another thing, and I think we had talked about this briefly at the thing, north of River Drive, next to the Enterprise Lofts, the design there right now calls for striping on the east side of that road. But we were looking for some parking along the west side of that. And if there was a way to configure that more prudently to be able to do that, you know, that Enterprise Loft has got some commercial space on the first floor. Tried a convenience store and a few different things that have failed. And there's been people who have talked. But having maybe a couple of angle parking there or something, I think, would help activate that spot. And if we got the space anyway, rather than winding it up with a bunch of crosshatches on the street, that would be super, super helpful.
Yeah. And so, yeah, Councilman Went, we definitely, you know, I heard, I heard what you were saying at the public meeting. We're still working through that and working through that with IDOT because we think we can make it work. But obviously, what we're doing is we're, you know, removing the lanes from being on the west side to trying to shift them to the east side across that intersection. But because it's a traffic-controlled intersection, we think that's very doable. I actually, at the public meeting, had a good conversation with Alex from Renewal Lean after our conversation. And I mentioned what you had said, and she was very supportive of that same idea.
Terrific. Do you happen to have the lane widths? I know, you know, we're eliminating some lanes, but would you at some point be able to supply, you know, what the widths of those lanes are that you are, that are remaining?
Yes. So we will be at 11 feet in our through lanes, and I believe we are at 14 feet in the bidirectional turn lane, which is a pretty standard width for that bidirectional turn lane.
Is that because of truck traffic? Because I think for our turn lanes that we've been doing with our complete streets and those sorts of things, that seems to be a lot wider than what we typically are. Now, at intersections, they flare sometimes for turning. But I'm just thinking for crossing roads, you know, if, you know, eliminating a couple extra feet sure could make the crosswalks a lot safer.
Yeah. And yeah, that's something we can continue to look at, too. And I'll confirm that with my staff. And, you know, because the 11-foot through lanes is, you know, about where we want to be unless the city would want to go down to 10. And then obviously, we maybe have some flexibility in that bidirectional turn lane. You can get it down to maybe 12 feet instead of 14.
Okay, yeah, that would be terrific. And then I know we had talked about this just real briefly. Remind me, was the scope, did it not include the alternative route around to 23rd that you were provided? Because I know that was part of the Sam Schwartz plan, but I haven't seen any engineering on that at all.
Yeah. And Joe and Laura might be able to answer that better than I. But you're correct, it was part of the Sam Schwartz study. I think a decision was made, probably by Joe and Laura early on, that with the ITEP funds that were allowed, it just wouldn't, they just couldn't, there wasn't enough money there through the federal grants that they received to be able to try to tackle that alternate route. Now, I'm not, Joe and Laura could probably talk. I'm not sure that they, no one, I don't think that anybody's forgotten about that. It's just at this point, with the scope of that federal grant money being on Nineteenth Street, they thought we better stay focused there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Seth. Yeah, that's correct. Shane, that is correct. We know it's there. We just, with the scope of the funding for these projects, it's, we're staying on task with the grant, within the grant limits. So that's where we're at with that alternate route.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the council? Thank you, sir, sirs. We appreciate this update.
You're welcome.
Moving to our broadband update, Mr. Vitas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You should have all received with your agendas and emails a copy of the High-Speed Fiber Optic Network Proposal Summary dated September 20. What I did is I went back and looked at the file and assembled this document based upon the RFP that was originally prepared back in December and released in January. And then the responses that were received from Genesee Communications Corporation, MediaCom Communications, and Key Tower. Those were the three bidders who provided the city with a proposal in response to the RFP. And that goes back, as you can see, back to February 2nd, when MediaCom submitted, Genesee submitted January 28th. Following that period of time, of course, there were changes, changes during the election. There were changes with Corporation Council, and this project kind of took on a life of its own. There was no decisions made. There was never any rejection of any of the bids that were submitted officially by the city. And communications then started, or negotiations started with Genesee Communications in terms of providing service to the city. As you can see, at one point, their initial proposal was for $20 million of a subsidy to the city with an additional $27.50 per household within the census tracts. That would be identified based upon the ability to pay. During negotiations, that number fell from $20 million down to $10 million with $5 million increments paid quarterly, or, well, as they completed the four different phases of build-out and construction and lighting up the city. There was never any changes to the MediaCom Communications proposal that was originally submitted. There was two options, $5 million option and a $15 million option. The difference there being more buried cable versus above ground. But in all cases, they were going to follow the grid as well. At some point back in March, the 26th, there was a proposal that came in from Metronet. Metronet is the company that is providing fiber service to East Moline, Rock Island, and the other Quad Cities and our neighbors. Metronet came in and provided initially a proposal that was zero cost. Of course, it didn't cover the entire city. There were gaps. And those gaps needed to be filled. That was the direction Council gave. They said, you know, leave no homes behind and leave no businesses behind. We want to make sure that we're, you know, providing a 100% coverage as much as possible. And that's where it starts. Discussion began there in March. And then in May of 26th, again, there was still no cost involved until they got into deeper conversations. They, meaning Marty at that point, Marty Van Ex. They came back in June and said, look, yeah, we can light up the whole city, but we'd like $2 million. At some point, there were discussions that took place and the $2 million became $1 million. I confirmed that with Mr. Salerno, who is, is the gentleman who is behind the Metronet proposal. So the $1 million was what they were looking for in terms of the subsidy to do the project. I will tell you this, that in communications with, the discussions with Genesee early on in my career here, it's about a $40 million project to bury the entire city. And they made that clear. They brought their chief financier in. We met, we discussed it. And hence, that's why they were looking for that subsidy to bury the cable. With Metronet, it's a million dollars. I'm not going to go through and belabor all of the different aspects of those proposals that I tore apart to put this together. They're here in the file. You're always free to look at that file if you'd like to see what's in there. But as you can see, there's really, there's really two choices at this point. One is you can continue to have discussions and negotiate with whomever you would like at this point, whether that's Metronet or Genesee. I will point out, though, Genesee does not provide a television service. It is video streaming is what you would get, basically digital, fiber-driven digital streaming. Metronet, like MediaCom, is a traditional cable service provider. But here it's fiber. You know, they're providing fiber. And MediaCom would do the same. So you have the ability to go back and negotiate. The numbers are self-evident. I don't think I need to say anymore. It's a million dollars versus $10 million versus $5 or $15 million based on proposals that were received. Or on the other hand, based on what we know today and what you're looking at and being willing to push back the project for a period of time simply to rebid it, the other alternative is to say, okay, we would like to rebid this project, reject all the bids, and then come back with more finite detail that was not in the original RFP. Original RFP that went out was like a broad brush stroke. It did not involve staff. Staff was not engaged in those discussions. It was strictly done by the former mayor and former corporation council. So the level of detail there was not sufficient enough for Key Tower to even respond. Their response was much different. They were talking about providing services by, on a lineal foot basis, $14 and change per foot to run it throughout the city. And then they did not address any And then they did not address any of the other issues, so that's the reason why they're all blacked out here, there was no reason to explore that any further. So I guess I'm looking for a direction from Council tonight, whether or not Council feels that we should continue to negotiate with one of these providers, or should we reject the bids and just go back out and make everybody resubmit? You will get the same bidders, the same vendors more than likely, because there's not many players. And what the numbers will come back as, I don't know. I do know that in discussions with the City of Rock Island, City of Rock Island entered into a franchise agreement, non-exclusive franchise agreement with MetroNet to light up fiber in their city, but they are not covering the entire city. They are paying zero, but they are not covering a large part of the city. And there are maps, I have these agreements in the file as well that would show you that. In East Moline, our other neighbor, there is much broader coverage, they have paid nothing at this point to MetroNet, but they are going to begin discussions to talk about serving the unserved areas that were left out. And those negotiations have not commenced based on my discussions with Doug Maxhiner on Friday. So when we met with them, we said, we want a number and we want a number to light up the entire city, leave no house behind, no home and no business. I will say this about the proposal, they will not, they will offer service too, but they will not necessarily go out and run additional fibers, fiber necessarily, we've got a large network of fiber in the city already that Genesio Communications has installed, is predominantly serving major industries, hospitals, small businesses, but that's predominantly what they've done with their cables so far. I will say the other thing about the MetroNet proposal is that in the future, as we develop parts of the city that remain undeveloped at the present time, or we should grow to the south, all that cable would be buried cable. There would be no aerial cable, fiber whatsoever, it would be buried. And that's in the actual proposal that was submitted. So it does need some clear direction at this point to get this project either going or restarting it.
All right, we'll take questions. Mr. Schmidt.
You know, in the past, this is the point where I've recused myself, after reviewing that situation, my relationship to MediaCom a little more closely, I have no connection whatsoever to the internet side of their business, so I'm not recusing myself, but I wanted to call that to attention, just since it would look weird that I wasn't this time.
Mr. Waldron.
A couple of points and comments. I remember when we were given the presentation from Margaret's gentleman that talked to us about the ARP funds and what they should be spent on, and one of them we talked about was broadband. And one of the initiatives from the federal government is that they didn't necessarily want you competing with the private sector for broadband, they wanted to invest in partnerships or whatever. The more I've read into this, the more I am, no surprise to the existing councilmen in it rather than new ones, I'm more intrigued with MetroNet's proposal. I'm also inclined to see that $1 million as a part of our ARP funds to get the entire city cabled up, so to speak, and I would personally like to see us enter into negotiations with MetroNet and get moving. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I don't hear anything from more constituents than anything, even more than our roads lately, it's broadband and infrastructure and the frustrations with MediaCom. So I would be, I would counsel to move ahead with the MetroNet contract.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
I would second that, and we don't have any expectation that Metro, I mean, either of these three would come back with much of a different result. And this is going to take a while, if you go back and have them rebid everything, I mean, how, what's the expectation that will take? I mean, that's probably going to take.
That's 90 days, it's at least 90 days.
Okay, three months.
Yeah, at least three months.
And I, I agree with Alderman Waldron, MetroNet has the best, especially since you just mentioned going south of the airport, they're going to bury all the cable, that's, it's really a nice amenity, I mean, if people like that, I like it, it gets rid of the ugly lines in the neighborhood, so I would support.
I almost feel like I should pull the council at this point, rather than just wait for your hands. Can we just go down the line? Do you have comment, Mr.?
Yeah, I guess my concern is that I'm not sure that we've taken the time to really reach out to like the Illinois Office of Broadband or any local experts that we have to really understand what it is that, you know, we need as we go forward. So as we enter into this, and I totally agree with the points that you've made, I don't think there are going to be others that are going to be able to come forward. I just feel that as we make that agreement, we should probably go in with more knowledge and, you know, more expertise than we've had.
Yeah.
And I appreciate all the work you've done, I know you were thrown into this, it's been passed around a bit.
But I love it.
Yeah, I know, I know. But that's just where I think, because there's going to be more money, you know, we think there's going to be more money coming down. And the Illinois Office of Broadband has helped other communities secure other funding as well. I just don't think we've explored all the opportunities that we have.
I think the trick there is to discern how much they're focused on rural broadband as opposed to what we are doing. Every meeting I've sat in on was focused on rural, but I'm not the expert, so.
But they went into Peoria.
Okay, so, but that is a good point, thank you.
And I would be happy to follow up on that, Sam, I really would, it was a great resource as you said.
I resent your links, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Timmy.
I concur with Alderman Waldron.
Mr. Wentz.
I agree, and you know me, that the covering the entire city was the most important thing to me. Second was not dropping double poles all over the city, and that will be something we need to negotiate. But Alderman Waldron, or Alderman Moyer's comment, in another lifetime, I used to build cell phone networks, and my concern is, I used to go into city council rooms like this every week, couple times a week, and I would have their lunch. Like, they had no idea what they were doing, they didn't have an expert, they, I would tell them, and I would walk away with the greatest deal in the world, I would walk away with a million bucks, just because they didn't know what they were doing and I was compared to Sprint, which was asking for $3 million bucks or whatever the thing was. And so I looked like a good deal, but then when I'd walk into places where they had hired a consultant and an expert to help them with the negotiations, they got a fair deal. I mean, we were willing to pay, or you couldn't leave empty spots. And so you're, so that's my concern with this is, to your point, I mean, these RFPs were kind of put together, quite honestly, even if staff, I don't think that we've got anybody on staff that is a internet broadband expert that has done this anywhere else or negotiated these things. So I think if we're going to go down this route, I would gladly us hire somebody who actually knows what they're doing, knows what the going rate is and is able to get us the best deal possible while we negotiate this, because, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of time anyway. And so I, if we're talking about dropping a million bucks, dropping $10,000 on a consultant to make sure that we're not overpaying and getting the bad end of the stick, I think is well worth our cost.
Plus it frees up some of Marty's time.
Mr. Waldron.
If it frees up some, excuse me, frees up some of Bob's.
Yeah.
I know. It frees up some of Bob's time also to make, to help him, it's well worth.
Yeah, because, I mean, we talk about these things, and I've talked about this before, we're talking 5G and everything, I don't know what's around the corner, it could be two years from now, putting fiber everywhere is absolutely stupid. You hire nodes and put antennas every other block and it's all wireless. I mean, I don't know if that's true, I mean, that's what, that's why the cell phone network went like in Africa, it's all cell phone, nothing's landline. And so you gotta, you gotta worry about those sorts of things, that if we're going to be spending all this money and everything, laying fiber all over the place, and we're a year and a half away from just putting antennas every other intersection, you know, and I don't know that, but an expert would.
Mr. Macias.
Myself, I, looking at the numbers, obviously MetroNet looked great, but I do remember having conversations with Marty about consultants. He specifically said he knew enough to be dangerous, but these consultants could really help us figure out whether it's even worth looking at us doing it as opposed to just working, leasing the actual lines out. So there was so many ways, but he, I do recall having the conversation where he did talk about consultants helping us make the best decision, so if the conversation could be had, still keep these guys, you know, not kind of push them off too far, but get a consultant fairly quickly, I would be all for that. It could end up being one of the best things, it's a big decision, but we could find out that we might have to go a whole different direction.
Mr. Williams.
Hi, I'm a consultant. Bob, I'm just concerned about the double poles. I could see the whole city being buried in the first ward, double pulled up and down all over the place, since it's the less served. Is it, when I look at this, it says partial existing grid and yes, do we know, do you have any idea how many double poles they're thinking, or do they?
I didn't see anything in the file that identified one, a map, which I know Alderman Wentz asked me for, there's no map showing at this stage how the grid would go out. I do know from looking at the other agreements, both in East Moline and in Rock Island, I made it backwards, and looking at those agreements that they do address that. I mean, it's called out right in the agreement, in the franchise agreement, using the existing poles that are there, if they're of the condition that they need to be, if those poles need to be replaced, they do get replaced. So all of that's negotiable, it's all negotiable, and that's why I want to be really careful, and I don't disagree about the consultant. My biggest concern from the get-go was when I saw the $5 million, the $10 million, $15 million, the 20, then the 10, then the 2, then the 1. And the first question I asked myself, and the mayor knows this, is what is the basis for that? You know? How do you know that it takes $1 million to serve the areas that are underserved, right? How do you know what the cost per house is to install this? And it's a different cost whether it's buried or whether it's aerial, you know, and then there's a cost for the box on the house, there's a box for the transformers, I mean, there are costs, like I said, fully buried Genesio, Mike Plains said it's a $40 million project all day long. So it's a million versus 40 or some lesser number because it's not a fully buried system. So we don't have that finite level of detail to drill down. But I do, I do agree, I think having a consultant work with my office would be really great, making sure that the million is negotiated, negotiated and then could be properly explained to citizens. They may be screaming that they want broadband and I don't blame them, believe it, there's nothing more irritating than having bad internet service when you need it. But they may come back and there'll be others that'll say, well, how did you come up with that? What's the basis of the number? I can't give them a basis, I just know it's a number that was thrown out there based on an RFP that really didn't ask for, you know, a description of how that number's calculated.
To your point, I feel like in our conversations with Joe Salerno, we would have to check our notes, but the notion that double poles would stay was not something he thought would happen, that they might have been temporary, you know, that kind of thing. So it's a question to be asked again, but I didn't get the sense that it was the problem that it might have been received as previously. Mr. Wentz.
Okay, thank you. And to that point, we had asked specifically, like, okay, well, we'll just have a timeline that they have to be down in six, and they wouldn't commit to anything, so just.
For information.
Be careful. The other thing is, I guess, I don't want to slow things down to a halt, I mean, this has been going on for long enough. And so I guess what I would like to move is that we direct staff to hire a consultant to help negotiate, and as part of that negotiation, if they come up and be like, hey, this is crazy, are you guys going to really agree to this? Well, then they come back to us and give us our thoughts, but if not, negotiate and get this done. So that we direct staff in, I guess, up to, let me say, up to $25,000 bucks, I don't think we'll have to spend that much, but up to $25,000 bucks for a consultant to help us negotiate and clear this thing out.
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Wentz, seconded by Alderman O'Brien, is a discussion?
I just wonder how does this work now? When you get the consultant in, do they look at all three bids again and work with all three, or do they get different people?
I thought your motion was to direct them to do it for MetroNet specifically.
What I would like them to do is start negotiating, but I think it would be smart for them to view those other things, and, I mean, they may come back to us and be like, actually, this is amazing, you guys will come out way ahead with, I don't think that's going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
But, yeah, but, but, but who knows, they may say, hey, you see this little part right here, you could do some revenue share here and get them back, I mean.
That's fair.
So.
So the consensus that I'm hearing is that MetroNet is the way to go, but we want to have a consultant to.
Review the file.
Double check and review everything and make sure we're getting the best deal.
Review where we're at.
I will speak, since I haven't spoken to this topic yet, I just want to remind us where the community is at. Yes, to your point, yes, there could be multiple views of what's needed and what's needed for the future. I think because this is a reasonable cost, a very reasonable timeline, and they will be moving out of the Illinois area fairly soon. There is a pressing need perceived by the community as well as on the part of the provider for us to move as swiftly as possible in the smart of a way. So I do appreciate everyone's perspectives on how to get this done, I think that's how we work as a team, that's great. And I appreciate the support for a plan that comes out of this for MetroNet that we have clearly heard from citizens is what they want. So we just need to dot our i's and cross our t's, I think, to make sure we're moving in the right direction. Was there another comment? Mr. Schmidt.
I, I think as we, as we've moved toward a consultant, which makes sense, to bring it in and to bring up that contract, I just want to make sure that consultant does feel empowered to say, you can say walk away. It's not where I want us to end up, I think with the numbers that are in front of me, that seems unlikely. But I just, I do believe that if we, if we hold the hands of the consultant too much, we're not going to let them give us the best recommendation. So that's something that, I mean, yes, by all means, come in, finish this conflict. First up, make sure this is the right place to be going, and then quickly determine it is and then go.
Okay, thank you. Another point to the same.
Well, and to piggyback on that, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen at the federal level in the next couple of weeks, I mean, there could wind up being something that breaks loose and there could be a ton of money that's available and that may be something that the consultant would know, is this realistic, is this something that we should take into consideration, is it something where, don't pay the million bucks, wait, and then we'll do those low income areas ourselves and give them free internet. I mean, who knows, because they're, I mean, they're low mod neighborhoods that they're asking this million dollars for, and we leverage that with a grant, maybe you do it and they get free internet. I mean, I don't know those sorts of things and that's why we would need a consultant.
Okay, thank you. So I think I'll take a roll call vote on this one. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the motion to direct staff to hire a consultant for up to $25,000 to explore the MetroNet proposal primarily, but also double check all the rest of the information.
Review the file, yeah.
Roll call. Alderman Macias.
Aye.
Wentz.
Aye.
Timmy.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight i's, no n's.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Could we get that out to the public, whatever message?
Yes, we can ask our new communications director to issue a press release, we do have the press here as well, we appreciate your help.
Get that out.
Thank you so much. And we are on to our work session, American Recovery Plan Act funding allocation, Mr. Vitas.
Yes, and thank you, thank you for the, for the last action item, I appreciate that, and we will get to that right away, find a consultant. This next item, of course, is something that is near and dear to all of you, and this is our $20.7 million American Recovery Plan Act evening to discuss the proposed allocation of funds over the next several fiscal years, some of which is in 2021, but the bulk of which falls in fiscal '22, '23, and then in the out year '24. Keep in mind that as projects move and as they shift, that these dollars will follow, okay? I mean, the way they're laid out now is based upon the existing strategic plan. And let me, let me preface this by going through this very briefly with you first. What we did is Carol took the time to. I mean, the way they're laid out now is, is based upon the, uh, the existing strategic plan. And let me, let me preface this by going through this very briefly with you first. What, what we did is, uh, Carol took the time to fantastic job of identifying the, uh, the available lost revenue. And as you know, she came up with about 9.5 million in '21, uh, based upon what happened during the beginning of the pandemic. And then she made her allocations, uh, going forward based upon a formula. So ultimately, uh, the projection is, is that there would be 14.3 million dollars of lost revenue that then falls into this unrestricted portion of the allocation that we received. So that gives us the flexibility as an organization then to apply those resources against your strategic plan and the pillars that you have and all the goals and projects that have been identified. So when you're looking at this number, we put money into the infrastructure category, which as you know, was the number one, uh, area that the citizens identify as their greatest need. They want to see first. Quality of place fell in right behind that, and then the economy. So the projects that, that we identified on the, in the, on the spreadsheet, uh, behind the, uh, summary, identify all the different projects and all the costs based on estimates from, from your staff. So there's 9.7 million dollars, uh, for infrastructure. There's 2.9, almost $3 million for the quality of place pillar, and about 1.7 million dollars over the next several fiscal years for economy. That then brings us then to the restrictive portion. Now that we've allocated the resources specifically to address, uh, strategic plan objectives and goals and projects in those three buckets, we then go to the restrictive portion. So we've got about 6.4 million dollars that's, that remains from our original, uh, ARPA allocation. And it then falls into the categories that are prescribed by the U.S. Treasury Department, those being negative economic impacts, public health initiatives, water source, and what we just talked about broadband. So over, over the next several years, you can see that there's about 3.6 going into the negative economic impact categories, about 75,000 in public health initiatives, and then, uh, water source and broadband, about 2.0, almost nearly, uh, it's 2.6, nearly 2.7 million, then for a total of about, uh, 6.398 million. And that is how we attacked this initially when we were summarizing all of the projects. We took the time to go through and kind of highlight some of, some of the bigger legacy projects, things that would really stand out that, you know, that your citizens and your business leaders and stakeholders would see. And passenger rail service, which I know people are working on diligently behind the scenes to make that a reality for not only Moline, but the Quad Cities, uh, and the Quiet Zones, stopping those train whistles that disrupt everything downtown at all hours of the night. No cheap proposition, but it can be done, and I've done it in other cities. It does work, but it takes money and it takes time and a lot of negotiations with the railroad. But a legacy project there. The Riverside Park pool improvements, which were presented by, by Eric. The, uh, one-stop shop, which we will work on, and I have to get into that, into the weeds on that. I mean, that's, that's, that's a great project if we can make that happen. The, uh, bikeway, bikeway program, uh, the tax layer improvements that are, that are necessary. Uh, it is the economic engine of the city right now downtown. I mean, without it, I don't know where we would be. I mean, seriously, that, that is an amazing venue that we're blessed actually to have. Uh, the broadband installation, that will get everybody to stop calling you and complaining about MediaCom and the services that they get or don't get. Um, small business loan program, wonderful opportunity to, to, to make things happen for these small businesses and light up this downtown again. And then infrastructure investments to reduce flooding, of course. I mean, it's a big issue. It has to be addressed. So, uh, there's a lot of really great projects in here that are, are high visibility projects. And, uh, when you take a look at the details in the other sheets, you can see how it's laid out. I mean, starting with fiscal '21, commitments that we've already talked about, to the Tax Layer Center, Quad City Steamwheelers, uh, Quad City Storm, the small business loan program that's up and running, you know? Of course, some money for sanitation supplies and face coverings. Looks like we're gonna be at this for a while, you know? And then consideration for that multi-use venue to add to the tax layers already great events that they host. You know, and that's to be determined as well and hopefully approved. But the 2022 ARPA allocation, you can see the broadband is in there. We'd like to get that launched in 2022, and it'd take 24 months to get that done, or 18 months actually is what I've heard. So by December of next year, it would be done, which would be phenomenal, right? And you, we can go through this whole list of there, of the various projects, but these are all the projects that appear in the strategic plan. So what we're doing is we're not only looking to allocate the resources that the federal government has provided the city of Moline, but we're also tying it to your strategic plan. And if you remember the process I described and how the wheels all fit together and pieces come together, you know, the money is being placed appropriately to address the goals, to meet the objectives underneath the pillars that you created, that the public actually helped you to create. Assuming that we approve this allocation, it's, 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 uh, it's a, it's a process just to prove this, but then as we get into the budget, that's when you can really fine tune it. Some of these things that are identified for 2022, you may decide to push back into 2023. Staff will definitely make recommendations for you, but it is your budget and it is your decision on the final allocation. So tonight, we're looking for guidance, you know, if this is something that seems satisfactory and, and would work for you so that we can build the budget for 20, uh, fiscal '22 and beyond into the 23, 24 budget. Um, or if there's any specific changes you want tonight that we need to be made aware of, you know, by moving some of these priorities around. I mean, so that's really what we attempted to do here, was to give you some guidance, but not tell you how to make a decision. Decision rests with the council. And, uh, with that, Carol, is there anything you want to add to this because you worked diligently with, with me and, and Macy on this?
One thing, the only thing that I would add is the timeframe.
Yes.
And right now, we do need to commit funds to the plan, just a broad plan on how we're going to spend it. But we have until July 1st, 2005, 2004.
Carol, could you pull the microphone closer to you?
Absolutely. Can you hear me now?
Still a little weak.
Uh, it's better, but yeah.
Okay, I'll try to talk louder.
There you go.
I'm so sorry.
It's the mask, Carol.
Um, but, um, the timeframe, we do, we do have the general plan, and we have to file that with the federal government. We have to do quarterly reporting, um, to the beds, and they are wanting to know our plan. The plan could change. But the final plan of permitted funds has to be made by July 1st of '24. And then we have until the end of December of 2026 to actually send the funds. So we've got some time. So as we work through this and the upcoming budget in the years to come, um, you, you've got time. I did want to say one additional thing about the unrestricted funds. And I'm so happy that about 70% of the money is unrestricted and is flexible. But I also want to say that the first year, in order to accurately calculate these numbers according to the federal compliance regulations, you have to have actually ended the audit and then file the numbers with the federal government. So that first year where you see that $9,500,000 that we qualified, that was for 2020, and those numbers have actually been officially filed with the government. So we're not reading here, but we filed the nine and a half. Those additional years out, the 1.8 that's coming up, that is our best projections based on the amendments that we just presented to you here, um, a month ago. And then as we go forward, as Bobby mentioned, we've got a formula that allows us one, our 4.1% growth a year, which is very good for the revenue standpoint. Um, and that then is, we're projecting that's gonna give us about a million and a half each of the next two years. But again, we have to wait until the audit is finalized before we would officially have, um, the spending for the work at first.
And Carol, I was gonna add too, I think there was, what, is it 1.2 or 1.4 million dollars that, that was unassigned?
That is correct.
That we left out there, which the council, you know, it goes beyond the, the, the projects. Now, keep in mind too, when you look at the project list, some of these, some of the things that were in there were not really ARPA-related. So those things got moved over to the general operating budget. So we have a list of those as well, and those will appear in the budget document when it comes forward. So nothing's been left out. It's just a question of priorities.
But the 1.2 million dollars, um, I might just add, that is in the unrestricted category, so that gives council a lot of flexibility. And then also, um, when we talked about the ARPA funding, um, with Enzo Flynn, I did calculate, we have already spent over a million dollars in water and sewer projects this year that would qualify in the restricted category, that we could use part of our first half of the allocation to replenish cash flow back into those funds. The council would desire that option as well.
Yes.
I see all nodding heads with that.
Yeah, so we've got, we are really blessed to do this mission.
Yes, we are.
Okay, I see multiple hands. I saw Mr. Went first, please.
Mine, before we get into it, is, is maybe, uh, just a suggestion on, on, on process. Uh, one thing that we've done in the past in, in situations like this is we kind of go around and, and say, I'd like to add this. So we kind of say, okay, an extra $50,000 for that, or on that line, I think we should reduce it by that. And so we, we kind of have a running total that we can then talk. So like, if somebody wanted to say, I, I think we should do another $50,000 for hiring seasonals to clear, uh, stormwater, uh, things, we would, we would mark that down. Okay, that's 50,000. You know, because you can't get everything you want. You gotta take it away from something else or, or, or those sorts of things. Because it, and what that resulted in was then a better flow of ideas where you, you know, everybody threw out what their needs are, you know? Like, uh, Alderman Timian had sent the thing out with, with Chief Galt. He might say, well, I want to, to add this in, and we kind of build the thing.
Sure, and it sounds like, uh, uh, I think what we could do is, just as we polled everyone about Metronet, we can go around, as long as everyone agrees not to share the floor, time-wise, equitably. Maybe hold on to too many specifics on dollar amounts necessarily because, uh, maybe not, but because we want to marry that with the budget talks that we're going to have. And so that's another place where we would have the specifics on dollars, right? So if you're, you're, to your point, the question is what is your priorities in, in what you're seeing from their proposal? Mr. Waldron?
Let me get my toes in first.
You may go first.
Uh, first of all, excellent job, Carol. Uh, I especially like the unrestricted funding and how we're going about that, so good there. I am also for moving ahead with 2021 allocation to give direction with everything except for, for me at this point, the tax layer multi-use venue. I think that is a little bit over and above what I could commit to now in 2021. So that would be something I would take out for further study or maybe for later years. Going into that, so that's for me is for 2021. For 2022, uh, you know, it's a long list here. And what I fail to see, and maybe I'm, I'm not seeing it properly, for me in 2022, I'd like to see a lot more of that unrestricted go towards roads. And I do not see hardly anything here for roads. I mean, and then, and if we didn't hear anything, once again, besides broadband, we've heard nothing about how poor our roads are. Now, I do see we're going after some flooding. I do see that we want to fund the pool. I don't disagree with either of those. But I would like to see some more roadwork being done or planned to be, being done in '22 and in thus into '23. If that requires us moving some funds around, uh, that I, that would be a priority in me. And last but not least, somewhere in '22 and '23, I hope as the bridge comes down, we identify some dollars for acquiring some land from IDOT. And, and I don't know if I missed that here. There's I-74 beautification in 2023, but I don't see anywhere where we're gonna acquire some land, and I think that should be in the unrestricted area also. And without getting into too much detail, those would be the, the highlights that come to my eyes. Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, we'll go this way.
Um, I see that there is some money in here for explorer natural prairie plant opportunities. I'm wondering, uh, what is, uh, we have an issue with a lot of dead trees in the city of Moline. And we need to, I don't even know, do we have an arborist anymore?
Yeah, several, yeah. Yeah, we just, we just allocated some money.
Well, that's something that, I mean, it, it's, it's a big issue. I don't see any money. Maybe I'm missing it for additional park property or taking care of all the parks we have. We're giving the, the park board a, so, and, and I'm not against it. I think the pool is, we, we really need something down there. But I'd like to see at least some more money set aside for, I guess, tending to the parks that aren't in the TIF, that don't have, you know, any resources, uh, to sustain them, and at least get them up to speed, uh, back, uh, to where they were. Uh, and I'm not against, uh, acquiring more property for that. But those are two things, and I agree with, uh, uh, Alderman Waldron that we do need to put, we've got some pretty rough streets, and I would like to see some money, more money going in the streets.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Um, so, I, I would just be curious, have you talked to the tax layer recently? Because I'm under the understanding that they also were asking for $465,000 for, um, reimbursement due to losses during the shutdown.
Yeah, the, the, uh, I, I can speak to that. The, the tax layer was looking for $100,000, uh, when they originally came to the city. And that was basically, uh, capital to get fully back up and operational. That's what that request was for.
The restart.
The same thing, and that's, that's up in the, in the 2021 account. Uh, and then they also came in and asked for $217,000 for the steam wheel, steam wheelers, and then $165 for, for the Quad City Storm. Those were the three things that the council previously addressed and previously had agreed to, and, and was, that was conveyed to them. The only thing that they requested that really didn't, you know, get legs on it was, uh, what Alderman Waldron has pointed out was the tax layer multi-use venue, which is basically the development of land in between the hotel and the tax layer so that there was an outside concert-type venue made available. That, they have a 700,000, 750,000 dollar grant from the state of Illinois that's already been approved, and that's just sitting there. And this is the other side of it. There's additional money that Metronet is also providing for the development of the rear of that property, which would relocate the, uh, allow for the stage to go in and relocate the, uh, the bike path that's there and push it, bring it closer to the water up on top, actually on top of the burn is where it's located. Uh, so that's what that project is for. So the project is on hold until some decision can be made whether or not that funding would be made available to them or not. And they're still losing money. I will say this, they have, this was the first month that they actually were in the black since the pandemic started at the last board meeting I was at, and very little in the black. You know, so just, just information to share.
Yeah, I talked to Scott Mullen, uh, recently, and.
Yeah.
He, he had said that there was, there was the additional need for 465,000 in the, um, you know, recovery from the COVID, and I was just curious if you had talked to him about that, because I know it's not anywhere.
And that was, and, and in part, they did get, they did get federal funding in part from, uh, federal funding, this form of SWAG, SVOG grant. You know, and that was to basically cover a lot of the losses that they had sustained over the period of time. So.
I was, I'm not completely understanding how some of these numbers come up, like the 2 million for the one-stop shop or the, um, the, the city 150th anniversary party. I'm not gonna try that word.
That's close to a penny, oh.
Yep. That should be a money-making opportunity, should it not?
It's part of a grant, a matching grant.
Yeah.
Issue.
We're looking for grants as well.
It's, in, in some ways, you could consider it an investment in tourism and.
In line 17, the grant program, I don't, I guess I don't understand how that's. Are, are we talking about, um, hiring somebody at 50,000 for a grant or?
No, I mean, we would really submit the grants on our own. I mean, we would produce, we would actually prepare the grant, submit it on our own.
We've got $500,000 as the cost. Sorry, there's line 17.
Line 17.
That'd be probably our match.
It's 10 times.
Oh, launch interior grant program?
Yeah, it's $500,000. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, that basically is, is, beyond just having a facade improvement program, that would be money that would be utilized to actually improve some of the space, commercial spaces that are downtown that need to be redone. commercial spaces that are downtown that need to be redone in order for somebody to actually go in there and function as a business.
I read that as.
So it's an inducement to get somebody on board and.
I read that completely wrong then, because I thought it was establishing our, an office to apply for grants as opposed to grants that we would provide to, okay.
Internal versus interior.
Yeah, I got it. No, I got it.
Yeah, okay. So far, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are really two items I would like to discuss. I also am, maybe three if we consider. I'm curious where the two million comes from for the one-stop shop, but that's, a lot of these numbers are rough and I understand that. I did send everyone a memo from Chief Galt about helping, and Bob, you were on this a long time ago, the twenty thousand for just helping with outreach about mental health services with CYFS and the police department. That was that infographic. I can forward it to you again if you'd like. And the others, I would like to explore the idea of doubling our sidewalk infill and replacement program. For those who weren't aware, we did not do any repairs for a year during COVID. And so there is quite a backlog. And this is an opportunity, and I think it fits in within restricted spending as well, where we could use it to kind of get caught up or maybe even get ahead of a lot of the crumbling infrastructure that we need to address. And so we typically do about a hundred and fifty thousand a year. I'm just advocating that we double each one and see where that shakes out. I don't know if it'll pass or not, but that's where I'm at.
So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk infill?
Infill and another hundred and fifty for repair.
A hundred and fifty for repair, so three hundred total.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Wen.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a few things here. To get into the tax layer issues, I am all for getting the steam wheelers and the storm, they're revenue generators, moving things through. But this council, we added a, there was already a three percent tax on ticket sales. We added an additional two percent tax on ticket sales. The first three percent was for capital improvements, like this venue or whatever. The two percent was for bringing in, increasing sports teams, whatever those things are. Now, there's not, because of COVID, and there hasn't been a whole lot of ticket sales, that fund is very minimal right now. But we certainly could, rather than using ARC funds, we could advance them from our reserves and then pay the reserves back out of the ticket sales over the next couple of years. I think that that could free up a few hundred thousand dollars of ARC funds that we could use other places. We would certainly, you know, over time, over ticket sales, get that money back for our reserve. So I don't think that that's any problem with that, but I would like to see that. And for the venue, I know Alderman Waldron is opposed to it. I'm in favor of it, but possibly maybe advancing half of it through that three percent ticket sales advance and maybe half of it through ARC funds. It's also a TIF-eligible expense. It's in TIF number one. Well, we had that conversation today that there may be some ability to figure that out. But, because we are paying some things that, as Alderman Moyer said, we're paying some things out of TIF one that we could be paying out of TIF five to renew and those sorts of things. So there could be some things along those lines. A couple of other things on here, like the mentoring chip program. How much different is that than like existing programs like SCORE and that kind of thing?
Do you have a line number for us?
The established small business mentorship program. I mean, that's what SCORE does.
Number, the line thirteen.
Yeah, sorry, thirteen. The startup accelerator program, we have a revolving loan fund. I mean, some of this stuff just seems like it's more marketing and understanding what is available out there. You know, like, for instance, our revolving loan fund, we should have somebody from Mercado sitting on that board to get that information out there, because I used to sit on it and we would beg people to come and take the money. And so I think some of this issue through our community person, that it's not necessarily, we just need to pour more money at it. We already have some of these programs. We just actually got to use the funds that we already have and have budgeted. The land bank in here, obviously, I'm a huge proponent of the land bank. I want that up and running. But there seems to be some confusion on the strong communities. We did get two hundred and fifty thousand to acquire properties that was provided along with the fifty-one thousand dollars to do the feasibility for the land grant, the land bank. And so I'm not sure if we need to throw another two hundred and fifty thousand out of ARC funds. We have funds. We just need to utilize it correctly. And I had sent you the information on those resources.
And I am still looking into that, because I really want, I'm getting different information from different sources. So I am checking on that.
Well, I talked with the person who administers that at IDOT, so.
I mean, I don't know why they would feel that they don't have the two hundred and fifty. Maybe it was earmarked for a different purpose, not the land bank is what I'm thinking.
But that's my concern, is that the money came in and then it was used for something it shouldn't have been.
Or how was it used? So I need to know.
We've talked about the one-stop shop a couple of times tonight.
Yeah.
Does everybody know what that is?
Can you define that for us?
I would love to define it. I would love to define it, because people have been building them for a long time. In fact, the last City Hall project I did, we built the one-stop shop specifically as a, it's like a bank. It's like a service center. It's a counter. It's a series of counters. And what it does is it gives people who do business with the city one place and only one place to go to conduct all their business and not have to go from this building across town to that building and back to the other building. They were just there only to go to the final building to make a payment. So, yeah, that's how it works. I mean, we even built twenty-five of them in Europe, believe it or not. And they were modeled after New York City one-stop shops, because my boss was from New York City. So we created them there even. So what this money does is we don't, you have to have the physical space to make it work. And the difficulty we have is the difficulty we have here in City Hall is, without a massive renovation, there's no way I can fit that in here. There's no way I can make that work. We can't do it over where Carol's at at the finance department. It will not work there, right? I can't go over to Public Works as it's presently configured and make it work, because you just have too many people, you know, sitting there, working and functioning, doing their work. And as the people are coming in, whether they're pulling a building permit, whether they're paying a water bill, you know, whether they're there to submit a building plan, whatever the case may be, or look for a rezoning request. You know, it's a one-stop shop where people can get everything done and they don't really ever need to go beyond that point to conduct business with the city. It's all set up so that you can come in and get all things done in one place. So the two million dollars is a place mark in terms of where we're going to go, if that's something the council wants to do, to try and streamline services as we provide it to citizens in the 21st century, as opposed to the way we're structured today. I mean, Carol threw out an idea, maybe we can do it across the street over there at the, what's the name of that building with the green roof?
Mid-American.
Mid-American building.
Drive by.
That was my.
You know, maybe that's an acquisition and maybe as an acquisition, we create a one-stop shop there. I don't know. Maybe we turn around by Public Works, because it's about the only place where a lot of the people are, actually, that you would want to see. You know, and we build an addition onto that building on the front side in the grassy area between the parking lot where the bank of offices are. So people can come in and they can get everything done in one place, come, go, leave. And it eliminates a lot of confusion, you know, and miscommunications and frustrations. Because, you know, face it, it's a modern world. People want everything and they want it now. I mean, especially the younger generation. So anyhow, that's what a one-stop shop would do.
Well, I appreciate you, because I'm sure people are watching at home and one-stop shopping, so I appreciate.
They're probably saying one-stop shop. We're gonna have T-shirts now.
Do you have any other items, Mr. Wen?
Yes. I had some, I have some concerns, especially since we're going through this thing with the quiet zone and we're desperately hoping that they are doing it and putting it. My concern with is if we're earmarking three to six million dollars for quiet zone, if anybody sees that, that is putting that project together, they're like, well, we don't have to do it. Moline's already got the money for it. They're doing it. And I think that that's a mistake. And so that would free up a lot of things. Things I'd like to add, and I mentioned this, fifty, and I'm not sure if these numbers are exactly right, fifty thousand dollars a year for stormwater to hire seasonals to just basically go and clean ditches, clean things out. I think it would, one, beautify a lot of our open pit drainage systems all over town. A lot of them in our commercial districts that look absolutely horrid. It would actually help our stormwater drainage. And I think that would go a long way. I'd also like to put another fifty thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars towards Renew to, for them and the MCDC to find a way to, kind of a seed money to collaborate, to get together and combine and organize that to get that rolling. I'd like to see a hundred thousand dollars for a grant writer. And that may be something that's coming up in the, but the return on investment of having an actual grant writer that is going to be here, they're going to be on the lookout for grants, doing all of those things. They may not be able to write every grant themselves, but they sure as heck are going to take a whole lot of things off of so many people's plate that their core competency isn't writing grants, but they're forced to because there is nobody who is a.
There's no one there.
So I think that would self
Sustain.
Compensate itself if we get the seed money and get that up and running. While we're talking about just dream stuff on here, I'd like to put somewhere between two and three million dollars towards both the parks and the library as seed money for a matching fund for their foundations to create an endowment in which they will actually then have some real control over their budget. So we would donate, you know, out of this thing, two million bucks with the caveat that they have to raise a matching amount and it goes into their foundation. And I think in this community, we would find that we would get enough people who love our parks and love our library that we would be able to, with a matching fund like that, to put together for those foundations. I had an acquisition of I-74 land. We have no idea how much that is going to cost and we need to have money available, because when it comes up, otherwise we're going to be bonding all over for that. Along these lines, I'd actually also like to see another twenty thousand dollars for the Child Advocacy Center and with the police department, they are doing some great intervention stuff with kids. And I think that that would be really great. And also some seed money for, now, we need to look into this a little bit more with the Mercado of exactly what that'll cover and what they're looking for long-term. But the Mercado is a wonderful addition to the vibrancy of Moline and I want to see it successful. The Antrimvarises have been doing the yeoman's work, getting that thing up and running. And I'd like to see, now, I, obviously, ARC funds aren't ongoing, long-term, but with the opening of their new place, something to help them open that up, get that rolling and move into the future. So that's my list.
Thank you. Mr. Mercedes.
All right, so that is much as.
Mr. Wen.
But I just, you hit a lot of the same things that a lot of us were thinking. I actually do really like the idea of the tax layer multi-use venue and I didn't realize we could go about it a whole different way. I was concerned like the rest of us, using ARC dollars for that. In fact, I think if anything, it should be bigger. You think of like, obviously, bigger cities like Kansas City, St. Louis, right next to the stadiums, they have these really cool multi-use venues that get people there early and even after an event, they stay and they spend money. So they really, I think that would be a great asset if it was maybe something funded separately. So I agree with you on that. One thing that I remember discussing, I see we have investigate environmental best practices opportunities. Can you elaborate more on that?
I was writing, I'm so sorry.
Can we elaborate on investigate environmental best practices? We're looking to see how green we can go, is that?
Yeah, I think it's about sustainability. I mean, Alderman Moyer was the one who actually made, included, I think there were four items in, if I'm not mistaken, which became one of the objectives and it's in the strategic plan. The way look about other green initiatives that we could do here, whether it's the, could be cleanup of the river, could be cleanup, could be cleanup of the drainage, drainage ways through the city. I agree that they are unkempt and they do need to be done. You could explore, even have a stormwater utility tax if you don't have such a tax. I'd put that in place. I'd put that in place in other cities because they had significant stormwater drainage issues and.
We were the first ones in Illinois.
We were one of the first ones in Wisconsin, so there.
It's in Bucito, but yeah.
Eventually, I'm going to get to work with Carol on the budget. Just haven't got there yet.
Okay, so Al, what else do you have?
So it's about green initiatives, sustainability.
Because I was thinking, one idea that I thought possibly having solar panels. I know the airport just recently installed a bunch under, over some parking spaces.
Correct.
And I thought some of our parking lots and some of our city-owned buildings, first of all, it sends a good signal that we're actually conscious about the environment. But we could also save money in the long term by not, by using solar power. I just think the one-fifty might be a little kind of short if we go that route, if we start looking at solar panels, because they can get very expensive very quick, especially for larger buildings. That's just one that stuck out. As far as like pricing, if we do look at solar panels, it could be way off. Other than that, you did a wonderful job with it. And yeah, just the same questions that everybody had, like with some of the other, you pretty much answered. Thank you.
Mr. Williams.
I'll go quick. I like everything Alderman Waldron said. I think though the multi-use venue is an important thing as part of the downtown vibrancy, I think that's a good thing. Roads, I agree, we need to beat up the roads. And as far as the sidewalks, instead of going three hundred grand, I'd even think about five hundred thousand. I'd like to see a huge impact with roads, sidewalks and broadband. I think, you know, going forward, that that's an easy, quick thing to make big impact with the citizens. They'll see it and it's much needed. It's taken a long time just to get to this mess. So everything else, you know, obviously, and the Child Advocacy Center, because if I don't mention that, Marcia will yell at me. Sorry.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mercedes.
One other thing, the only concern I have is if we start doing so much with these roads, obviously, it's a long list. Do we have enough staffing or will we have enough staffing to handle all this stuff? That's my only, my biggest concern, especially with like roads.
It's one of my biggest concerns too, but I can keep in mind, as I said in the beginning, you know, as we build, as we built that strategic plan, you can see it was front-loaded, very much front-loaded. And then in the outer years, it starts to fall off. Not every project that's going to be, that's going to be there is necessarily going to get started and completed in twenty-two. Some projects may start in twenty-two and end in twenty-three or start twenty-three and twenty-four. You know, and some projects may not even get started because we don't have sufficient staff. But the funding is there and we simply are going to advance that funding into the next fiscal year. So our goal is to deliver on as many of these projects and programs as we can, you know. And then as we do the action plan, the work plan, once I have a budget, you know, then I can really start and see, you know, the distribution of the staff. You know, do we have sufficient staff in sufficient areas? I mean, whether it's ice and snow removal or ice control, we know we're shorthanded. We're not only shorthanded in terms of not having enough people currently filling authorized positions. We need additional authorized positions and you're going to see that in the budget.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Williams?
No.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I agree that I'd love to see more roads. I think the, and sidewalks and those things very much in alignment. Um I agree that I'd love to see more roads, and I think the and sidewalks and those things very much in the in alignment. Um as we look at the uh, sorry, I was just looking at it, the uh Prairie Plants opportunities. That's also something that I'm very much in support of and um and can can really help to help deal with flooding opportunities and other things. I just want to echo that that support, I guess. Um one, one thing that I, oh, and on the establishing the downtown farmer's market program, I just was concerned if that's enough. And I guess I it and maybe it is, and it just it just feels, obviously, it feels small, and I know it's a relatively small planet, but if if it takes more to get it done, I think that could be something of of great benefit. Um one thing that that feels to be missing to me, and one thing that's been weighing really heavy on my mind in these last couple of weeks, is that um we are running out of support coming from federal and state level towards preventing evictions. And I really, I I don't know what that needs to look like and if that's tying into our existing programs, supporting those, or finding ways that we can further promote that. Um but if we run out and we start having to deal with evictions coming in the winter, or even worse, people who are so far behind on their rent, but the landlords can't have paid the mortgage, I mean, it just, it's it's a, it keeps going. And I think if we can use some of that money to help people who are just really in trouble, that that we could benefit um a lot of people.
Thank you. Uh along those lines, I um, you know, I see my job as connecting dots quite often. And, you know, hearing from Reverend Ford, meeting with Humility uh Homes and Services last week, I believe it was, um and and now what you're saying, Mr. Schmidt, I do think we have um some portion of this could go toward um the public good in those kinds of programs. Um and so I I'm exploring that already. I think funding for that kind of thing would work. There's a, there's a wonderful model out of the Davenport, um and I'm blanking on the title of the people that work. Uh they do street outreach, that's what it is. They're they're like ambassadors doing street outreach. There's, there's a program we could model something off of, and we can get, yeah, and we can get information on costs there. So I don't have details on things there. You already know I care about workforce um infrastructure enhancements, and I included a packet of letters of support for you today to just peruse as we go on. But I I really appreciated the bipartisan nature that um shows through here of support for this part of um ARPA allocation, dollar allocation, um and also the support from varieties of organizations that we partner with, like the Chamber and United Way, Q twenty thirty, et cetera. Um and then also addressing um issues of poverty. We have, we have um the opportunity to again work with more partners like Project Now, um to use some of these dollars in that way. So uh I think I'm a hundred percent behind all of the comments about infrastructure. Deferred maintenance is the one of the veins of my existence, just in terms of public service, so we we definitely have to get there. I want to preserve some proportion for these types of programs as well, because they also make a big impact with a lot of people. Um and along those lines, I I I guess I wanted to finish my thought with, I really hope that we find a way to use an equity lens on these disbursements. We talk a lot about downtown, and that's awesome. Um it is a driver, but we've got to invest in other parts of the city as well. So whatever we can do with some of the ideas, like Mr. Wen, you've been mentioning things, programs we already have, right? Things that can have a reach beyond downtown, neighborhoods that haven't gotten attention in the past as much potentially. Um just, there should be sort of an equity audit of these allocations to make sure we're not missing a chance to help someplace that hasn't been helped. So that's, that's a big priority for me. Mr. Waldron.
I'm not restarting, so don't get me wrong, but I I I missed one on line twelve, launch public art and placemaking program. I meant to ask when it was my tote dipping time, didn't we a couple of weeks ago commit a hundred and sixty-five thousand, my memory recollects, out of the general fund to support that? Is this over and above that, or is that falling under what we're going to see in the budget, or is this over and above?
I think we have to check on that.
I think we'll check on it. I mean, I think this is over and above. That was a a national endowment for the arts matching grant was you're referring to.
Okay.
And I will verify.
See, I thought we were committing to like a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars annually out of the budget.
Correct. I it falls to the, to the, your point about double checking duplications. That that's, that's another thing that we should be done, an audit of duplications, things we're either already doing that just show up here because they're, they've been clearly made a priority by this council.
Right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's the check and balance process we go through and what we developed the budget.
Mr. O'Brien.
Uh you can even make the argument, I mean, you can make the argument, Project Now puts the money right back into the city. In a lot of cases, it's uh Reverend Ford does an excellent job with that. And also with the Child Advocacy Center, I believe most of the clients are from Moline, so that's definitely.
Yeah, that's why.
Yep. It's R I C C.
And I I did, I also talked to the Humility of Mary folks today, and this homeless thing is uh, you know, once the evictions, and they've already started.
They've started.
They don't believe we're going to see much, I mean, I think that the thought is that it's going to get bad in the new year. I think it's kind of a pause right now, but we probably need to be prepared for, because you're going to see a lot more probably homeless families.
Yeah, there's a, we're convening, just side note, I'm convening a group of partners, people in the city that are interested in this issue, as well as partners out there, people from Humility of Mary, et cetera, um to talk through this issue more and come up with some solutions. Uh yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I apologize to jump back. One thing that um, and this i- is inspired from the conversation about trying to make sure we're actually advertising the services that exist, as well as these services. I mean, does it make sense to include some sort of budget for promoting those things? And would that qualify would be the second, but so that there is a a budget to go out and actually promote the message and say, hey, we can help. Um because it's, the money is there, and that's an important step, but if people don't know it's there and.
Yeah.
They won't know to use it.
Inflexible portion for sure, but we might be able to get it to qualify under the um restricted.
Okay.
And and I don't know if we'd have to do it as like, you know, split over the line items to be like, we're we're kind of funding a little from all these little items, but it just feels like there's an opportunity and um, you know, I like that many of these things are kind of in the one time, you know, here's the startup cost to get these things going, and then we're going to have to be dealing with the long-term piece of that too.
Okay. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. I'm I'm uh I'm really pleased that that we brought up um the need for affordable housing solutions and and poverty and so forth. Another group we should really be looking at supporting is the Quetzal Housing Coalition uh Council, we have a couple of different names, but um they do a great deal of this work, and they get some support on the Iowa side. We're trying to do some work on this side, and I think we could probably uh partner with them. And Ashley and, you know, they're all, they're all involved in that.
Mm-hmm.
Um but then you talked about the 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 parks and and just making sure that we're equitable around the city. And I know we've talked about this quite a bit. How does that, how's that work in the budgeting process then? Are you, uh would, because, you know, we could talk about East End Park, or we could talk about, you know, updates to the pavilion at at um Peterson Park, thank you, here somewhere. But but we have a few other parks and a few other places in town where, you know, some of these things need some attention. Um and I don't know what the dollar amount is or or how we ask the Parks Department to do that, because it's really their thing, but.
Yeah.
I guess we'll leave it to you.
Yeah, in response, the reason you're not seeing it is is because they haven't come forward with it. They came forward with the swimming pool, right? They came forward with that project, and they came forward with, you know, the 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 uh pickleball courts, and they came forward with the other project. But there's so many parks and so many projects out there that don't have any financial data attached to them. So when that park plan was created, and that wasn't that long ago, and that's one reason why we want to update it, is that a good park plan will tell you not only these are the improvements that the public wants, which the Park Board agrees to, which this council agrees to fund, it also provides the funding mechanism. It tells you what is the cost for that in today's dollars and can project it out. It makes it so much easier for the council to make a decision what to include, what not to include. I can say, I can say that park improvements have to come out of the unrestricted portion though, because they are not eligible in the restricted side, the same way that roads are not eligible. If you remember the presentation by Ansel Blenk, so when we prepared this, we 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 took that in consideration. And there's a lot of great ideas, and I didn't catch the name of that organization. It's hard to hear back here with this thing buzzing.
I'll send you a link. It's uh Quetzal Housing.
Thank you, because I'm taking copious notes of everyone's comments.
Carol, you want to just respond?
I'm just going to ask, when it comes to the park projects, I know that Eric and the Park Board have been putting together a five-year um capital project plan.
Yes.
And one of the things that the Park Board is going to be needing on earth saying, and I think that will probably become part potentially the the recommendation for council to review, is to use a portion of those police and fire pension savings on bonds if we do indeed move forward with issuing those bonds. It's going to be, I calculated it, um and it's going to be about one point eight million dollars in this current year that we could split, um you know, however council feel feels fit. But um I worked it out with Eric with the projects that were on the list to split it between parks and high-rise right now. It makes both of those funds hopefully for the next three years.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron.
Just to give a little explanation, I'm a longtime ex-member of the Park Board. And the council, council liaison still, the parks, they realize they need to do a lot of work in a lot of parks. They realize that. Up until COVID, we had been reducing their budget. Uh we've been reducing the library's budget, we've been reducing the park budget. Uh I mean, as the police and fire pensions obligations have gone up, we've reduced some of the capital or we've at least left them the same. They haven't really.
Out of the property tax, we funded it out of general fund. So don't don't say that we were reducing their budget.
Please don't interrupt. I understand. You can raise your hand and be called upon. Thank you, Mr. Waldron.
We certainly haven't increased it to make their their responsibilities where they can take care of everything in every park. They have not had that ability, and and it's a financial thing. Mike will argue different, but I I hold that. They they would like to do more. It's a financing thing, financing, staffing, and time.
Okay, Mr. Timian, I believe I saw your hand.
Yes, Your Honor. Um a- as we were talking about poverty, um and I I I second, I am really glad these conversations are happening. And this is kind of just a nebulous statement. I would encourage us to also consider ways to help those on the edge of poverty, which uh there there's an organization called Modest Needs, and and what they do is um, people basically submit this, you you get that one expense that puts you over the edge, that you can, it's just going to ruin you, because it's it's a, it's a car repair. It's a furnace that goes out, it's whatever. It's your water bill this year or this month. And and they vet it, and they make sure it's legitimate, and then they pay it. And so there is no money going to the people, but it is completely, be- because keeping people out of poverty is cheaper than getting them out of poverty. And so I would just, I'm just kind of putting this out there as food for thought, i- if we're talking about these kinds of programs, maybe identifying who the residents of Moline are, who are on the verge of poverty and looking for ways to prevent them from falling into it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wen.
Yeah, and to that point, Project Now has some great uh helping along those those lines. And and that's what we're talking about. I mean, there are so many resources, and and like Dr. Ford said, they've got millions of dollars they're trying to give away, basically. I mean, and so it's not lack of funds necessarily. It's lack of connections between the people who need it and the people who have it. And so a hundred percent, that's where I think we should facilitate, not duplicating things that is not our core competency, it's giving people to the people who know what they're doing. Uh and then, you know me, I I I hear what you're saying, and that is absolutely true as the money that is coming out of the uh property tax, it's squeezed because the amount for uh our pensions grew, but everything that was squeezed out was replaced and then some from the general fund. So I I just don't want anybody re- uh watching from from the thing that said that we're actually, we're decreasing uh the the parks and the library's budget itself. Their budgets actually, for the most part of the time, had actually increased as a full amount, just the amount that came from property tax.
Thank you. I have one last item uh that I missed on my notes and my portion, uh land acquisition. That was brought up here and there. Uh Bob and I have talked as we've gone on tours and talked, getting getting ready for um I seventy-four redevelopment, et cetera. There are some strategic places, properties that we could look at to help that downtown redevelopment. Um and so if there's any money, maybe it's in the one point two million uh of other city things. Maybe it, maybe as as these levels change in some of these different items, you know, um land acquisition or property acquisition is a priority, because we want, I would imagine, we'd want to have as much control over the downtown redevelopment as we possibly can. So. Thank you. I think that concludes the feedback. You can always follow up with uh Mr. Vitas.
Please do.
And Carol Barnes have one-on-ones, whatever.
What will be the next steps? Given our input, what will, what will be the product next?
I think going forward, Carol and I will have to sit down. I took as many notes as I can. I'm going to verify my notes against this meetings tape, because I don't want to miss anything. I mean, I know how it is here. Don't miss anybody's ideas.
And actually, if you could email your notes to me, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, if you want to share anything with us in writing, that's even better yet, because I compare that against tonight's discussion, and we can then take a look at what is ARP eligible, what would be best to come out of the restricted, what could, what would come out of the non-restricted aspect, what could be general operations. Um because there's a lot of great ideas just floated out there tonight, and uh I I appreciate it.
Do you want?
Mr. Waldron.
Do you want specifics, like if I think, uh I I'm not picking on anything, number nine, child hair pro- childcare program, five hundred thousand. If I believe that's only worth two fifty, would you like to?
You could say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
By the way, I didn't put that in there.
I only say, I.
I'm I'm saying that's the go-bear, go-home that you.
And you told her to think big, so I doubled it.
I only numbered I randomly. I did not go down there. But I just went off specifics. If you.
No, I think, I think if you feel that way, I mean, you should let us know.
Thank you.
Because we want to be able to filter this out so that we can finalize it, present it to you, and then move forward with preparation of the budget in October, because as soon as October one comes, I'm going to lock the door. And it's going to be budget, budget, budget all of October and going into November. It's really critical that we get this right, because it's a three-year budget.
And I I wanted to say, as we close this out, thank you so much to all of the staff. Uh this is double duty, right? Yes, we have decisions to make, but you're helping us through that process, so it's very much appreciated how much you're doing for the budget cycles and for the ARPA cycles, so.
Yep.
I'm really welcome. I, if I could, I'd like to just ask one, just give a little direction. Um I know we've talked about the Riverside Pool a couple of times. We had a presentation and we kind of proposed maybe using ARP funds here. But I also heard the infrastructure is a very high priority with streets.
Yes.
Will there be um any wanting for issuing bonds for the pool instead, which would free up two point seven million dollars? Um since interest rates are so very low. And I did talk with um Spirit Financial, as we're looking at these K O B bonds. If we were lump sum the pool, and the pool, you could go to two point, you know, five, you could go the full course over five million dollars. We would save on issuance costs anywhere, you know, on the low side, forty thousand dollars, up to eighty thousand dollars cash flow limit now with these bonds being piggybacked.
Yeah.
Anyway, it would free up two point seven million dollars for infrastructure or other priorities. And then the other one, a little direction, um are you in favor of the bike path construction? Or would you rather throw that into the street side of it? Because those two chunks of money right there would be very significant.
Open that up to council, Mr. Wen.
It's a very, very valid argument.
What would be the idea for the amortization? Would it be till twenty forty, or what?
Yeah, it would, yeah, it would go out in twenty years, and if you did the entire project, which is like five and a half million dollars, I think the um total P and I was about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So and the interest rates were hanging around the two percent level, I mean, wherever we're going on, it would never be cheaper.
Yeah.
And and it's callable at ten years, is that?
Yes, it would be callable in ten years. Yes, it's going to be callable in 10 years, and we'll get into it in the budget. We have a lot of debt dropping off, and not only is the current pool dropping off, but we've got over 1.5 million dollars of P and I on our normal street debt dropping off. So part of the budget, I'm going to be proposing an idea to try to bond at a higher level, if interest rates are low, just to jumpstart our street project in total. So, but there is money available for the pool, and the council would choose, so.
Worth exploring.
Yeah.
Mr. Went?
I was going to say, because we're also going to probably have about 550, 600,000 in property tax once TIF number one.
Yes. I think it might be closer to six.
Six. Have you gotten the, has the county given you the estimated?
We have the estimate, but I have, does it, we think the TIP one taxes that would be available to the city will come in '23, but it will be around 600,000, yes.
But have you gotten the estimate from the county for this tax year? Do you know what that number is?
It went up 0.9%, and it generated, I think, an additional 180,000.
At current?
At current living rate.
Current.
So it sounded like the council was like, yeah, let's see the numbers if we bonded it, bonded the pool. Am I correct? Thumbs up? Yep, and then they can compare options. Thank you so much. That concludes our work session. I don't believe there's any public comments, so we will move to our city council agenda with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, certified, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an invocation, Mr. Musis?
No, I don't, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of September 14, 2021, and appointments made during committee of the whole September 21st, 2021. Council 1189-2021, a resolution approving the voluntary extension of paid leave benefits related to COVID-19 from October 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022, and approving the extension of benefits of emergency responders as modified and approved in Resolution 1045-2020 from October 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022. Council 1190-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation agreement with Griffin's Floor Crafters Incorporated for replacement of Moline Police Department Flooring for the amount of $91,080. Council 1191-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Langham and Construction for project number 1365, 2021 Asphalt Maintenance for an amount of $298,850. Council 1192-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk and city staff to apply to the Illinois Department of Transportation for a safe route to school grant in the amount of $250,000 to construct a sidewalk ramps and related improvements in the city of Moline, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and staff to do all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application. Council 1193-2021, a resolution approving the 2022 through 2024 Strategic Plan.
Move to approve, send agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by, was it, Mr. Schmidt, thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Council 3025-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 Alcohol Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class CC licenses in the city at the request of Trimble Incorporated, doing business as Watermark Corners.
Your Honor, a motion to consider.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Abstain.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention, and one nay. And that motion passes. Now, that was for a motion to consider. Now we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Abstain.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstention, one nay, and that motion passes. Council 3026-2021, a general ordinance amending Chapter 4 Alcohol Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances to create an exception to the liquor license requirement for artistic or personal service establishments. This is the BYLV.
Move to consider 3026-21, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion to consider passes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by, what was it, Alderman Went, sorry, wait till. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you. Adam Clark, this lady's business. Mr. Williams?
Just wanted to thank everybody who made the Eighth Annual Belgium Cultural Fest a success, and it was. And I'd just like to thank the Moline Fire Department for a fire that took place in the 3,000 block of Seventh Street, short time ago, day or two ago. And I believe a cat was rescued, so that's a special note there, but they did an outstanding job. And just talking to all the neighbors that assembled themselves at a fire, they were duly impressed with the response, and they should just give them their props.
Mr. Macias?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. We had a request from a business here. We're installing a new road off of Coal Town Road. It's down where like Roger Clausen's office is, and we're installing a sidewalk along with it. Unfortunately, the sidewalk only goes to the three businesses down there. The three businesses don't want it, and it's going to cost us between $10,000 and $12,000 to do. We clearly have lots of infill spots all over town, so I'd like to move that we forego the, it's going to be engineered, so if later down the road we want to put in the sidewalk, we can, but to save the $10,000 to $12,000, put it into the sidewalk infill fund and be able to use it in a place where the sidewalk is needed for the city. So that's my motion.
Second.
Second by the Alderman O'Brien?
Waldron.
Alderman Waldron. Discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I played part of this discussion, and the only thing I would ask the council to do is then, to make the motion include removing it from the contract that was awarded to the contractor, because it is a part of a contract awarded by this council.
So moved and amended.
Thank you.
Thank you, and also seconded by Mr. Waldron.
So clarified.
Yes, and that came up several weeks ago, so, yeah. Any further discussion on that?
We did talk with Joe, and he said that if we did it tonight, it shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Was that an arm, Mr. Williams?
Yes, I guess I just have to say, all we can is chasing our tail. I understand we don't do this, and we throw it towards other residential sidewalks, but then down the road, succeeding councils, when they want to have that, they're just going to have to backfill and come up with the money then to do something like that. I mean, I understand why we did it at JDX and 41st Street. That made sense, but, you know, that's the first thing, that's just my knee-jerk reaction to it.
Mr. Went?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, but there are certainly, you know, if we had all the resources in the world, I, we'd keep it there and say, this is the betterment for the entire community. But we've got some serious spots where kids are walking in the street when they're trying to walk to school. Here, there'll never be a kid walking there trying to get to school. I promise you that. And so if, with limited resources, I'd rather spend it in places where we can help our kids get to school, rather than businesses have an obligation that they don't want. Down the road, once we infill everything, let's put it there too.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Thank you. I was actually going to say what he just said. This road goes basically nowhere people are going to walk, and, because those are businesses you should drive to.
Mr. Warren?
Actually, with the amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic on Seventh Street, that people walk down, they walk the Hy-Vee, they go back and forth, and the bus drops them off on Seventh Street, they walk then eastbound down 36 to those businesses. So actually, you're actually going to create, with people, as you build more businesses there, and as the Blondel develops, that sold, you're going to have a lot more foot traffic now in an area where you had none before, so it won't be kids walking to school. It'll be people that are getting off buses, going down, you know, for an orthopedic, or, you know, for the different shops that are down there. So, you know, I think that anticipating the traffic, there'd be more than you might realize.
Mr. Went?
So there is going to be a bike path next summer installed all the way along Coal Town Road, so people will get to there. The Blondel's spot, I don't know if there's going to be a lot of kids walking there, because I think that the new thing going in there is a crematorium, so that may not be a place that kids walk to, but I do hear your point. Part of the other problem is when we helped engineer John Deere Road, that intersection at Seventh, somewhere along the line, somebody told them, well, we don't need crosswalks on all sides, just put it on one side of it. So if you got to that corner, you can't cross John Deere Road or Seventh, because nothing was installed there to allow you to. So we don't want to encourage people to get in that corner and get stuck.
Mr. Williams?
But that doesn't stop people from crossing.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, roll call on Mr. Went's motion. Alderman Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention, I was fortunate enough to go to the grand opening and ribbon cutting of the new PE facility at the high school. It was a sight to be seen. It's come quite a long way since I was a student there. The weight room is larger than some college weight rooms. There's an indoor running track. There's a pole vaulting thing. I don't know what the word is. Cage court, I don't know. There's something for softball pitching. It is a Class A facility that really contributes. And that same trip, the mayor, Bob, and myself went to go see the CNC room program that is, that used to be the old auto shop. And this is also another high-tech, world-class facility that is training the next generation of engineers, and they're also investing heavily in the trades with welding, and they're applying for these really awesome grants that is going to help build the middle class in the city of Moline. And so I just couldn't be happier with what we saw, and I just wanted to mention it, because it's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Joe Brian?
Oh, I know, one-stop shop could be like on the east entrance of the city. That'd be a great. It's a brand-new building.
There you go. You let me know where.
Mr. Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor. Counsel and mayor and staff, I attended my last of the month Rock Island County Waste Management Agency meeting. And just to remind you all that drop-off recycling ends on September 30. There were about 40 people there today. 20 of them decided they needed the full three minutes to yell at me for it, even though we voted to keep it. It didn't much matter. But that's another item I'd like to keep publicizing to the public, so it doesn't sneak up on anybody. But September 30 will be here shortly, and drop-offs recycling will be going away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. I just have one, here, I wrote it down, one update, another one of my roles to advocate for our city with a lot of different entities. So last week I learned some wonderful things about surplus government materials and other things that we could pursue. I have to circle back with staff on with Senator Tammy Duckworth. That was very informative. And today I sat with representatives from the Chamber, Tri-City Building Trades, Jeff Nelson from Metro Link, with the Secretary of Transportation Omar Osman, and the Deputy Secretary of Transportation Doug House. And we talked about several different projects, passenger rail included, the John Deere Expressway and I-74 interchange, the East Rock River Bridge, if you've heard of that project, there's, we've needed a bridge on that side, I-80 and 280, and the whole Bison Bridge concept. And Jeff Nelson mentioned electric vehicle charging stations and things he's updated us through, I gave you his report. So the message is that I dot knows we need passenger rail, and they are actively working on that for, on our behalf. But we took this time to have an online meeting where normally we would have gone down to the lobby for the city. But I just wanted you to know that work is being done. And I believe tomorrow I have a call, it was changed from today, with Allison Flood, who is Governor Pritzker's municipal outreach person. So I'll be reiterating some of these priorities again, especially the infrastructure ones that we need them to come through on board. So I wanted you to have that information. And last reminder, next Tuesday, rather than a meeting, is the Renew is really leading the charge on the first public input on the ULI report, and Mr. Went will be there with me for sure to cover any general city listening post issues that people might want to bring to us. That is, registration is required, just due to capacity down at Heritage Church. I believe it's 6:30 start. 6:30 start. And then there will be an online one on October 6, I believe, and that press has gone out, speaking of communicating. Renew has been putting out that press release and putting it on, but I think we can probably get Tori to do another level of it.
You want that?
We can still follow the plan Alex Elias has, but we can elevate that on our own as well. And they already have gotten 200 and, I want to say 60 responses to a survey, so we're doing that like we did with the summer that I did, in-person, online, and a survey for feedback on that. So we should get some good information. That's all I have.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120 slash C2.